Thank you.
Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Rialto City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 11, 2024. Madam City Clerk, can I get a roll call? I think I'll read off the rest of the items.
Yes, do then.
This is a regular meeting of the Rialto City Council, Rialto City Council acting as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency, to the housing authority, and the utility authority. Madam City Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Point of order?
Yes.
I believe this is a budget workshop at this time. That should be announced as a budget workshop.
Yes, budget workshop.
Okay, I stand corrected. This is a budget workshop first from four to six, however long it goes. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Protem Carisadas. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Baca.
Present.
Councilmember Mitrue Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
City interim city manager Mike.
Present.
Milhouse. And also, let me just go back with the agenda.
Yes, please.
We're gonna, we're gonna allow, I mean, we're going to further record, let the, let the record know that the mayor would be absent for the meeting emergency and also the city treasurer. But I just wanted to indicate on reading the agenda, we have the budget workshop at four, and then we will go from the budget workshop, we will go into closed session, and then after closed session, we will open up the regular council meeting.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
You're welcome.
And now that brings us to the budget workshop.
Mr. Alvarado was ready when you were Mayor Protem.
We are ready for you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you. Oh, just gonna say if we can get the presentation going, perfect. There you go. Thank you, Gabe. Good afternoon, council. This is a budget workshop for the fiscal year 24-25 budget. My name is Mark Alvarado, interim finance director. I'm very happy to be here. Mostly because got very good news for the council and the city looking back and then also looking forward as we talk about the projections of revenues and expenditures and the fiscal condition of the city. So with that, I'd like to during this time cover three years, since we are finishing up the fiscal year 22-23 audit, talk about where we're at with that and where are, where we're projecting to end up, and then quickly look at the, the close of the 23-24 fiscal year and give an update of where we think we're gonna end that fiscal year, and then we'll spend the majority of the conversation looking at the projection for 24-25. And then talk about five-year projection where we think we're gonna be looking into, into the future, so we've got a little bit of a foresight going out where we think we're gonna be with, if we need to be conservative or more conservative on our assumptions. So first all, on the fiscal year 22-23, we all know that we are finishing up that audit. We do have the draft of the financial statements. We have been working with the auditors the last few months. They have finished all of their field work. We have closed the books for 22-23. Very good news that the city's in very strong financial position. We are, staff is, is looking at the financial statements right now, just to making, just to make sure that the numbers that the auditors took from us, any, any adjustments that had to be made, that they were done correctly, so we are looking at, at all of that as we speak. We are looking to get the final financial statements wrapped up sometime in June, early July, and we anticipate coming back to the city council. I'd like to come back to the city council in July with the council approval of that fiscal year 22-23 audit, and then we can put that to bed. So that being said, I just want to go briefly, just kind of summarize where the numbers are that we're gonna, that we're gonna show for the end of the year 22-23. There may have been some discussion or maybe a little bit of misunderstanding about the reserve amounts at the end of, of 22 or even, or even 23. As, as you can see by the numbers going across from left to right, at the bottom of the page shows what our total reserves are from 2020 through 2023, and you can see we are around $100 million. There may have been some, sometimes when, when, and this has happened to me a lot in terms of what the number is of, of the general fund reserves, because there's usually two different big categories. One is what's the total of the reserves, and someone can say it's X. In this, in this situation here at the end of 2023, it's approximately $100 million. A lot of times, someone will answer the, answer the question and just be focusing on what's the unrestricted general reserves, because there are, there are amounts that are already allocated. In, in this, in, in this system, in this instance, there's approximately $48 million that are already reserved earmarked by, by the city council. So sometimes some, someone will not use that as the number because they've already been reserved for something. So the answer could be, oh, you have $52 million, but that's the amount that's unreserved that, that the city and city council still has available to look at to be able to allocate to different projects.
Mark, is that calculated in, in the bottom figure that you gave us, the unrestricted?
Yes, yes, yeah. Total, total general fund reserve.
The unrestricted?
The unrestricted are approximately $52 million. So if, if you look at that last column on, on the right, the very top number is the unrestricted fund balance, approximately $52 million. The next line, approximately $27 million, that is the, per the city council's policy of trying to keep a reserve for economic uncertainty of about 30%. That is what that, that number is, and that's why you can see it's increasing, because as, it's based on the total expenditures of the prior year, and as the expenditures increase, obviously that percentage is gonna increase along with it to try to keep up with that, with that number. Sir.
Is that swing having to do with the, the loan that we took out of the reserves? For our UA, or utilities?
The, the drop between, you, you're talking about from, from 21 to 22?
No, I'm looking at the unrestricted fund balance, and there's a swing. Does that have to do with the loan that we gave to the utility authority?
That was for, that was a, a combination of additional expenditures in, in that year. There was, there was a lot of money, approximately over $20 million, given to the CIP fund. That was also the, the, the year that we made a $10 million payment for OPEB to, 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 to buy down that, to pay down that, sorry. And there were also additional monies transferred to our internal service funds, our, our workers' comp and general liability. So there was, there was additional monies paid to, to that. But then you can see that there was, because of the very strong financial activity in 2023, the reserves were able to increase. The committed reserves were money that the city had, that the city council had put aside for park projects. There was also additional $5 million that was set aside in case there was another reserve that the council thought may be needed. But during the 23 year, because the council already had a 30% reserve, that money was released. So that's why the committed reserves goes down to zero. About a million and a half was actually transferred over to the Capitol Parks to finish some of the park, park improvements during that year. So overall, we will be bringing back to the city council the financial statements and detailing out a very, very strong financial year for 22-23, and then also showing that the, that the city is ending that year with approximately $100 million in total general fund reserves. Briefly, gonna talk about 2023, 2024. Obviously, we are coming to the close of the year. We are tracking excellently on both the revenues and the expenditures. Our revenues are gonna be over what we had conservatively budgeted for the current year. Our, our expenditures, we're, we're gonna be more conservative and, and, and assume some of them will still be coming in what was budgeted, but there's a, but there's gonna be a, a number of departments where we're gonna be under budget. There are a lot of vacancies, so there's gonna be a lot of automatic savings because a lot of positions are, are unfilled at, at this, at this, at this moment.
And some of those positions are gonna be eliminated as well, right, Mark?
Um, I do not know. I, I don't think there's any positions being eliminated at, at this point. So, but that can be the further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So we are gonna, we are projecting about $158 million in revenue, about $142 million in expenditures. Definitely wanna make the note that the expenditures are including the, the, the transfers out that we are, that we have anticipated for 23-24, which includes the, the, the money that we have, that the council had, had already authorized and allocated for the construction of the police station. So those monies have already been, are, are gonna be transferred over to the CIP fund. So that project, obviously, it is underway right now, and that can be fully, fully completed. So this graph here is basically the, the same one as I just showed you two slides ago, except now I've added the, the very last column, which is our anticipated reserve numbers at the end of this coming month, June 2024. And I, I will note that if you look at the second to the last column from the right, that's the column we were just talking about, the $100 million reserves for 23, and you will notice the, the, the strong financial activity and surplus that the city is, is going to be experiencing for 2024. So the reserves are anticipated to be approximately around $117 million. The number that I would have council look at is, is again, what we talked about earlier, the unrestricted fund balance, which is the, which is the first line. So you can see how that number has, has significantly grown. Obviously, there, there's been a very, very strong revenue increase here in, in the city, which is, which is excellent, excellent news. So with that amount of money in reserves, one thing I will, I would like to suggest, since we are coming back to the city council in July with the close of the 22-23 fiscal year, put that audit to bed, that might be a good time to come to the city council with a lot of options on maybe looking at that unrestricted fund balance and give the city council options. Give the city council information regarding what are our, what are our liabilities right now, whether it's OPEB, whether it's PERS, whether there's other internal liabilities, a lot of potential CIP projects that, that maybe we could allocate monies to. But I think that would be a good opportunity for a more in-depth discussion about looking at options for the city council to start using some of that unreserved fund balance.
I, I have some questions in the revenue category. Do you have the ability to go back prior to 22-23 on property taxes?
Yes.
So can, can we get a revised sheet that shows maybe eight years of property taxes?
Absolutely.
So we can kind of see where we came from to where we're at now? And on, on the sales tax category, I see there's a $7 million, $7.5 million dollar drop in sales tax from proposed year to this actual year. What is the reason for that?
If, if you will indulge me, I, I, I will get into that as, as we, as we, as we get into the more, more slides, matter of fact.
Then I hope you'll also get into, why would we be adding new employees on to the tune of almost $3 million when we, we have a shortfall in sales tax? I hope that's part of your conversation.
Yes, and, and just so, maybe I should just give you, give you the short answer now. We are, we are decreasing the sales tax $7 million because that money we got in the current year is, is basically a one-time correction to the city's benefit for sales tax that should have come to the city in the prior three years that was allocated to different agencies. The state sales tax board through the last couple of years has actually been working on this, and so that was a, that was basically an additional one-time payment. So we're actually taking that out of our calculations for future growth.
And again, I'd like to see the last eight years of sales tax.
Yeah, as, you know what, I, I have a couple of slides in here that I don't know if I go back eight years, but at least I go back maybe five or six, but we can definitely get.
I would hope we could go back eight years.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, no, no. We can, we can go back, we can go back 10, 20 years.
Good.
Yeah.
Maybe we should go back 10 years.
Okay. Make a, make it a nice round number?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can do that.
And one other question you may not be able to answer today is, it looks to me like the UUT is kind of flat, and I'm wondering why based on, again, I'd like to see 10 years of numbers to see where we were at and where we've come to.
I, we, we were actually just working on that, and we actually have 20 years of UUT information that we can, we can send out to the council tomorrow morning. How's that?
I don't know if you can answer this question or tell me where it's at in here, but the city council, each council member supposedly has two interns. Where are those payroll numbers at?
Those are in the city council line item budget. So if you go to, in, in the, in the book that you have, under the administration tab, I'm sorry? Page 17.
Okay.
That line item budget is, it's, it's city council, and I believe it's under part, part-time, part-time salaries?
Part-time salaries?
It, it, it should be 10 part-time positions that are, that are budgeted.
So why, why would we be going from $77,000 to $201,000?
Because we had not budgeted for those positions in the current year, and we're, and we're doing it for 24-25.
How many interns do we have, do you know?
Right now, or?
Yeah.
How many do we have right now?
Can we, can we get that number and who they're assigned to?
Yes, we can absolutely get that.
And then discretionary dollars for the city council. Each council member has $10,000 in discretionary funds. Where is that in here?
That's under the, in the, the middle section where it says council expenditures. If you go all the way across, it says $50,000.
Okay, so actuals for 2023 and 2024, is, is that 30 grand? So not all of it's been spent by council members. I think I asked for a report, Tanya, on at least accounting on mine. I think all of us would like to have an accounting to know where we're at, because we're almost at the end of the year.
Yes, we can, we can get, we can get you that tomorrow.
Okay. And do you have an opinion on the financial situation of government, the city versus the state versus the federal government? I'm looking at a lot of numbers where people are laying off employees across the country, and yet we seem to be adding employees, and I'm trying to figure out why. It doesn't make sense.
You know, that's a, that's, that's a really good question. From, from a, from a macro standpoint, yes, it, 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 it definitely looks like there's a lot of uncertainty in, in the, in the labor market, in the job market, the increased prices making it harder for businesses to stay in business. But, but what you, what you first said, from, from the relationship to city government, to the state, to the, to the, to the federal government, ironically, I, I, I look at where cities are right now, and I think cities are in a much better position than we were 20, 30 years ago. Because when I was first coming up, the biggest worry I had every, every year when I was putting the budget together was how much money that the state was gonna take. And, and we had to balance our budget with, with pencil because we didn't know what the state was gonna come back and, and do to, to take money. Slowly, that got, that got changed where we were able to put more protection in, local agencies, so, so the state could not be taking our property tax or, or, or taking other one-time monies. I think the, I think the very last final straw was, was when they, when they shut down redevelopment, and that was what, 2011? Ever, ever since then, they have, they have backed off of, of, of cities of, of coming and taking money at, right at the end of the year. So I think from a, being able to, to kind of manage your own, your own house, I think cities have been a little bit, you know, in a better spot to be able to know what we have and we're gonna be able to keep it. But, but from that macro standpoint, yeah, there, there are definitely a lot of pressures.
And, 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 can I ask one last question? And in your opinion, are we headed to, towards a recession, no matter who the president is?
In my opinion?
Yes.
No, no. We, I think we, we may be slowing down, because at some point, a lot of the money that was, that was pumped in to the government when, when COVID started and all that, at some point, people, I think everyone spent all the money, but everyone's just using their cards, their, their credit cards and still spending. That's gonna slow down. I don't think it's gonna go negative, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna go backwards.
But if you're, if you're looking at the numbers, people aren't using their credit cards now because they're maxed out.
Oh, yeah.
I, I can name you the top three banks in this country that are in serious trouble because of credit cards.
Because of credit card.
You know, also, you're not gonna bring interest rates down, housing costs down, gasoline down without reducing inflation. And I don't see how you do that without recession. And I'm, and I'm not the only one.
Right, yeah. I, I don't, I, I definitely think that we need to be conservative in our estimates going, going, going forward. Maybe, maybe flat, maybe, you know, incremental growth, one, one, two percent.
Should we also be conservative in our growth?
I'm sorry?
Should we also be conservative in the growth of our city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
You know, I'd just like to state that each of the departments, looking at the, the agenda that was sent to us on the budget, a lot of the departments are very prudent right now in eliminating positions and consolidating positions. I'd like to compliment them too. As well as we look at the budget going forward, I, I see positions that were eliminated up and down by the various departments, and that's a savings to a lot of us when we're looking at 23-24 budget, when some of these positions in the past are not going to exist in the future based on the recommendation of the various departments, all the way from the fire department, the police department, to public service, to planning, you name it, there's some of these positions that are gonna be eliminated, and I, I'd just like to compliment the, the, the various departments in being prudent and looking at what they need and the needs in terms of the future for the city to operate to as well. And that's where you come in, Mark, is that we just need accurate number based on revenue that we're gonna have, the restricted monies that we're gonna have, and projections that we want to spend in terms of the future as well to be solvent, you know, four or five years from now too as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for those comments. Sir.
I guess that brings me to the point. Do you have like the vacancy rate for our departments? Because I was looking through my packet yesterday to see how many positions are vacant in each department. I didn't really get a sense of that.
Yeah, no, no. It's, it's, it was not in the information that, that, that was, that was sent to you. I don't have the number up the top of my head.
Because I, I know some, some of these positions are difficult to fill with this labor market, and I haven't really gotten an update on how far they've come along to kind of close the gap.
Okay, we can, we can definitely get that for you, and, and we'll make a, a list of the information and get that out to you tomorrow.
Because our budget can change, you know, if you start filling in those, those positions overnight, I mean, it could drastically change our budget, one way or the other.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and one, one thing that I've, I've always said, matter of fact, I was just mentioning that to, to, to someone earlier today. I, I've always, I've always had the thought process that we adopt the budget on July 1, and if we need to make a change on July 2, we absolutely can. We don't have to wait to, to the, to the mid, mid-year. We don't have to wait till the next budget cycle. Budgets are, are meant to be a little bit outdated the day after that we adopt them, and that can be for a good reason. Something good happened, and we need to, we can, we've got more money coming in and we can do something, or something goes wrong where we are gonna get into a a, a down, downward turn, and, and we need to pull back on, on things.
Then going back to the uncertainty of it, I agree with my colleagues. I think there's a lot of uncertainties in terms of what's happening in our economy. We've had, I mean, now we have our 99 cents store shut down. We had other kind of businesses hurting right now. We have massive layoffs at the, at the airport, with many of them are residents. So, you know, there's still, I feel like there's still a lot of uncertainty in terms of how well our economy is doing with all these layoffs taking place.
Good, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted, so with the sales tax being one of the strongest and most dependent item on our budget, the, the amount of layoffs that are going on across our state have just started. And so all these people that are not gonna have a job will not be contributing to that sales tax. So I, I really think we need to, as my colleagues have already stated, is really be as conservative as possible, and with that 10-year, going back 10 years and seeing what, what was going on then, to be able to look at those numbers and, and look at that as a more realistic number to try to budget as we move forward. I, I do think that, that we are slowly heading into, whether it's a recession or just a slowdown. So we need to make sure that, that we are ready for that, and that we're not ready, and that we're not waiting for the, I was gonna say, we just gotta be ready for that, because we can't wait for, for the total catastrophe to hit us, and then I- And then I just don't want to see layoffs and I don't want to see huge cuts moving forward. So I look forward to getting those 10 years.
And that's our job is, is to always be looking at the information that's in front of us, working with our consultants to, to, to see what, what's happening in the economy and be conservative when we're, when we're thinking about what we're going to, what's going to happen in the future and, and take a more conservative outlook on it and, and slow things down, so.
Well, not only being conservative, but we've got to be innovative too as well to look at how we can generate additional sales tax. And that's where we have to put our minds together from the council to the staff and others in terms of what is it that we need to create that will generate the additional sales tax to augment anything that may be happening, happening at the federal or state or county level too as well. We've got our own city to protect. We can't be worrying about what the federal is doing or what the state is doing or what the county. We're worried about the city of Rialto and how are we going to survive whether it's 10 years from now? And what do we need in terms of sales tax that are going to, well, the kind of programs or businesses that we need or housing that we need that's going to generate that kind of sales.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Okay, I'm going to be move, moving forward with the PowerPoint. The next couple of slides, we've just kind of, we started already talking about this. I just wanted to briefly mention to the, to the city council two, two areas as we talk about what our reserve balances are and different opportunities that we will have and bring forward to you. The city does have a OPEB trust, a Section 115 trust that was set up a number of years. I, I must say congratulations to the council for, for doing this. There's not a lot of cities that have, that have, that have taken this step. But also to be able to put as much money as you have away. A lot of cities will set up a trust and just say, we'll put money in it later. But I was very pleasantly surprised when I saw that you've got over $26 million already in there. The, the liability right now is projected to be about $45 million. So you're in a very, very good spot with, with, with this trust and, and being able to fund for the retirement medical. But this is something that the city, that the city council can also always be looking at as an option of putting us, putting away one-time monies to, to further enhance the, the value of the trust. The next two slides, I'm just going to talk briefly about the, about the PERS liabilities. First for the general employees, obviously every year we have to, going to pay attention to what CalPERS is doing on the investment, investment side and it, it always seems that we're always just trying to keep up with what they're doing in terms of the liabilities that continue to grow and grow. Right now, we've got information through 2022. They're always a year behind in their calculations based on the data they have for employees and, and such. Even though we got the information in 23, we will be getting another report in Ju, in this coming July, which will be before 23. We all remember that there was a, a very bad year, the, the negative 6% investment return for, for that year. That definitely increased the liability for both of the, of the pensions, the general and the public safety. I'll show that next. Just a reminder, CalPERS has a goal. They're, they're, they're trying to earn 6.8% every year on, on their, on their portfolio. The graph I have shown just is, I just wanted to illustrate that, that we are continuing to having to factor in increased payments to CalPERS. You can see from this graph, we're, we're going to be going from a little under $5 million to over $6.5 million in the next five years. So this is definitely how CalPERS has structured. They want money now. The only good news that I have so far is that after 2030, they're going to, they're starting to lower the, the annual payments. They kind of restructured everything a few years, few years ago where they wanted money upfront. So they kind of put more pressure on, on local agencies. Good news was that the city council did allocate about $5 million to make an additional payment in 2023. So, so that, that did help. And obviously we can bring back and have a further discussion about making additional payments to, to CalPERS. This slide has basically the same information except now we're talking about the police and fire retirement liability. Right now, as of the, as of the latest valuation, it's $111 million. Again, both of these went up in the last year. I hate to say it, about, about 30%. And again, it was because of that, that negative 6%. Remember, their goal is 6.8% and that's just kind of a stay even keel. That's their, that's their goal, just so they can keep up with the cost that they're having to pay for. So a negative 6.1 is basically a 13% swing in what, in what they, what, what they were really wanting. So that's the bad news. The good news was when there's, when there's strong years, then they will adjust this liability back down. So that number is always going to go up and down. It's not like any other liability where it's going to continue to, to go up and up. As you can see by the, by the graph here, the, the annual payments are going to go up about $3.5 billion over the next five years. But after that, they will slowly start to flatten out and then, and then go down. So again, kudos to the council for making a, an initial $5 billion payment in 2023. And we can definitely have this conversation further on options to, to continue to try to look to pay down the unfunded liabilities. Okay, now we can talk about the, the 24, oh, sir.
Sorry, going back a little bit. I just had a quick question about our pension program. Does it have COLAs inside the, the formula?
Yes.
Our pensions? Okay. So it's not just a flat rate where we're doing COLAs every year within the pension?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So as we, as we talk about the, about the 24, 25 budget year, good news is that we are bringing to the city council a balanced budget. Actually, the revenues right now, what we are presenting are about $3 million over what are, are, are proposed expenditures. So not, not only are we bringing a balanced budget, but a, a budget that is currently showing about a $3 million surplus. We are all, in addition, factoring in, making sure that we keep the, the 30% reserve policy and making sure that amount is, is going to continue to stay there and additional, and will be increasing as the size of the budget goes up. So right now, as I, as I showed in, in previous slides, that amount is about $29 million. And as we will talk about throughout the, the rest of this presentation, very conservative projections on our revenues and, and we can obviously have more of a, further discussion on. Yes.
The audit that hasn't been completed, would that change then these figures? Could it change these figures or not?
If, 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 are you, if you're talking about what we're going to be talking about going forward for the 24, 25?
Yeah, and then looking at the audit that has not been completed yet from 2020, what is it, 21, 22, 23?
23. No, no. What, what we're going to be talking about now on, on what we're looking at as the projections for 24, 25 are, are based on, on, on what's happening right now, what, what we think the revenues are going to be. They're based on what the current expenses are. They're, they're, they're based on what is currently being negotiated, what has, what has already been approved in any, if there is any salary increases, what the salaries are now, what the current costs are for operations, contracts, things like that. It's all based on that information now and then looking at projections going forward.
Thank you.
So before we get into, or the assumptions that, that I want to make sure that, that we that we clearly explain to the, to the city council of kind of what's going to be in, in these, in these numbers as, as we, as we start to look at them. Personnel costs are going to be going up about 4%. We've got, every year there are, there are what we call step in, increases, salary increases for, for staff that are available to, to have that. Obviously, our supplies and, and contracts are, are going to continue to be, to be going up in terms of those costs. Our revenue assumptions, sales tax, a 2% growth rate. Again, based on the, on the current history, that's actually a conservative number. We can definitely have a further conversation on that. Property tax going out in the future, again, very strong. And as, as we bring back the, the history of, of the property tax, we will see what, what that growth is. Property tax, 3% to 4% and other revenues, including our UT taxes and things like that, about a 2, 2% to 3%. So these are kind of the estimate of what we're looking at as, as we look at, and into the numbers we'll be, we'll be rolling out. Again, as, as we put together these, these numbers, we want to make sure that we're, we're going to be conservative going out into the, into, into the future. We're trying to keep our, our cost containment in alignment. And as we get additional monies, we want to make sure that we can still factor in different, different payments to our different liabilities and have, and give the council flexibility so we can make, make those decisions and possibly make those payments. So here's, here's the one, here's the one sobering slide out of, out of the, out of the presentation. And this is, this is because we've got very conservative revenue estimates. So this graph here is showing from 2021, 22, that fiscal year, three years ago, going out to the 28, 29 fiscal year. The blue line is revenues. So they have increased from 21, 22, again, mainly on the backs of sales tax. Sales tax has been very, very strong. You will see the, the dip from the current year to 24, 25. And that is specifically what council member Scott had, had talked about earlier, brought up. That, that is because we are going to be showing a $7 million reduction in sales tax because we basically received an additional $7 million in the current year as a one-time additional payment. So we are taking that out. And so it's, it's going to, it's going to make, it's going to make our overall revenues look like we are going down. But if you take out that, you can see the steady growth going out into the, into the, into the future. The yellow line is the expenditures. The reason for the big drop from 21, 22 to 22, 23 is because there were a number of one-time payments made in 21, 22. We talked a little bit about that at the beginning when the question was brought up about why did the reserves drop? There was about $20 million, $25 million moved over to, for CIP projects. There was a $10 million payment for the, to the OPEB trust. There were additional transfers to workers' comp and general liability. So that, that made 21, 22 a very much, a very much of a spiked year in terms of our overall expenditures. 22, 23 brought us back down to more of a normal year in terms of the overall costs. And then you can see that there's a, a more of a normal trend line going forward on the expenditures. But I do have to note that if you look at the year 26, 27, that's when the two lines change. And at that point, the projections show that the expenditures are exceeding.
What do you attribute that to?
I'm, I'm sorry?
What do you attribute that to?
Based on, on the revenue assumption, and, and again, the, these are very conservative revenue projections that we are laying out here. So based on that, that's how these lines lay out. I will also, I will also say that the, the expenditure line is, is what we, is what we budget.
But is that based, is that based on personnel, wages and benefits, retirements?
It's, 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 it's based on everything. Personnel, total personnel costs make up roughly 68 to 70% of the overall budget. So yes, and that is a normal percentage for cities in, in terms of what the personnel costs. They're always going to make up a large amount of, of the overall operating cost.
So if I look, if I look at that predict, projection, it basically tells me we're headed to a 2008 situation where we're going to be laying people off and cutting expenses.
So what, one, one caveat that, that I, that I will, I will say on this is that this is budgeted expenditures. The history for the city and, and it, it shows when you look at where we end up the year is that the actual expenditures are always a lot less. So it's very prudent that we have this discussion and we show you these numbers of what, of what the projections are. But then if you look at this and then go back to the last, the, the first part of the presentation where I showed you what the, how much the reserves have increased over the last few years, that's basically telling you a different story. And that's because the expenditures, departments have done a very good job of, of not overspending. Obviously, there's been a number of vacancies. So the actual expenditures have always been less than what the projection is. So there's definitely two pieces of information that have to be taken into.
But you can't guarantee that, can you?
I'm, I'm sorry?
You can't guarantee that same scenario is going to happen. And, and let me ask you another question. I don't know if you can provide us with this, but I'd like for you to try to. I'd like to go back to 2018 and look at number of positions by departments and overall wages and benefits by departments and see from 2018 to today whether we've come up, down, or stayed the same.
Absolutely.
I think that's important for this council to see that.
That's good information. Sir?
My, I have, I'm very much along the same lines. I, I, but I want, I don't know if there's such thing as kind of tracking vacancies and the trends of vacancies in public agencies. And I don't know what the future is. You know, I don't think anybody really foresaw the kind of high rate of vacancies that our public agencies are going through right now. But I don't know if there's such things as projections into the future either. Are, are there trends where you could actually kind of line up, you know, our expenditures and our, our revenues? And also do an overlay of projected vacancies or something to the effect with the labor market?
Okay, we can.
You know, I, I think it's.
We can try, yeah. I, 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 I've never done that, but I can, we can try to put something together that, that does a correlation of that.
I think it does tell, it does tell us part of the story is how many vacancies we have because it's so tied to our budget. And yet it's part of our question mark is like, are those real expenditures or are there going to be vacancies there? It's hard to tell without that part of the story.
Absolutely.
I, I just think that looking at, at this projection for revenues, if we really want to be fiscally responsible, we should have at least a, you know, it should be a flat line, not a, a, an increase or not growing because we really don't know. We can't count on those revenues. And not knowing what the future expects, I think if we really wanted to have a, a fiscally responsible budget, we would have that line be a little bit more flat, not a $20 million increase.
Okay.
And of course, the expenditures, yeah, we're very conservative with them and a lot of times they, they don't. But that line, I, I think to, to, to expect that we're going to have an extra $20 million, I think is is a little irresponsible.
Okay, point taken. Could we get the, okay, thank you. Okay, so now I will, I will talk a little bit about some of the categories in the general fund area. Obviously, what you see here, our, our, our top category is going to focus on the first three. The property tax, the sales tax, and the utility users' tax. Very, very, very good diversity for the city in, 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 in terms of, in terms of the major revenue categories. A lot of cities aren't able to have a strong property tax base, base and a sales tax base. So it's, 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 it's very good and this, this helps when there's a recession on the sales tax side that, that, that the city's got a good, a property tax, also having the utility users' tax and the amount of money that that generates. Those three, those three categories. Um, those three, those three categories, uh, account for approximately seventy, seventy-seven, uh, percent of all the general fund revenues. So that, that's excellent. Sir?
I looked at that number, but I was looking at maybe is it possible to segregate what's like point of sales versus just general sales? And, and the reason why is because one is a lot more political or can be legislated away faster than maybe the rest of it. And so it has a different nature to it. And I was wondering if it's possible to, even the way we're looking at sales tax, to decipher what is point of sale versus just regular general sales tax. Because, you know, as you know, uh, you know, a part of it just be, just, is just because of the way, um, the, the state sales tax is set up for things such as Amazon versus just our general kind of sales tax that we have.
Okay.
So I just wanna know if there's a way to segregate e-commerce versus the rest?
Yeah, there, uh, there are, uh, a couple of, of the, uh, categories that, that we get. One of them is, is, is called the county pool. And, and that's basically where, um, it's, it's, you really can't tell, you know, where, where that's coming from now with a lot of the internet. They have different, what they call points of sale. Is it on someone's, is it at their house if they're sitting on the couch, that's the point of sale? Or if they're go to showroom and look at a car there, but they're gonna go pick it up somewhere else? So, uh, there's, there's a big category and it's grow- it, it used to be a very, very little when, years ago. Now it's a very big, big part of the overall sales tax. It's the, it's the, uh, uh, state pool, it, it's the county pool. A lot of that money goes in there and then it gets allocated by within the cities within that county, uh, based on their, based on what their sales is in, you know, overall. So, um, uh, that, that, that pool is actually growing a lot.
Yeah, but it's also telling us that we need a good county assessor too as well, that's qualified, that can generate and tell us exactly what we're gonna get back. The reason I state that, yeah, it was mentioned politically, because we have an opening and we need to make sure that we are the best qualified individual or elect the best qualified individual for that position, because that's gonna impact our cities.
Absolutely, absolutely. But yes, we can, we, we, we can definitely look at, at getting more information and drilling down to the, uh, to the sales tax info and seeing where, where it works.
But what, and what gets reported to you, does it have a breakdown of Amazon and specific point of sale businesses in the city?
Y- yes.
So you can, you, out of that pie piece there, you can, you can break out Amazon, you can break out Medline.
All the.
You can break out the various point of, point of sales other than that pool amount.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and that would be helpful to have because there's a concern about Amazon and whether or not there, there's two issues with Amazon. One is if somebody entices them to close up their warehouses and move somewhere else. And that has been happening. Uh, the other thing is, is if the state suddenly decides we have to share that revenue with other cities like Rancho Cucamonga wants us to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think it's important for us to watch that number, uh, in, in, in the event that that happens because that'll be a huge chunk of revenue out, out of the city.
Absolutely.
Um, and then I also think we oughta, we oughta know what we're making off Renaissance. Uh, because I think a lot of people in the community assume that our huge sales tax is coming from Renaissance and it is not coming from Renaissance. In fact, probably most of the successful businesses in Renaissance are food businesses which don't collect sales tax.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can, we can, we can work with our, uh, sales tax consultants. They have the ability to, to create, uh, areas based on whatever we tell them. And a lot of cities will do that based on that new development or that new shopping mall. And they will, we can take every business in there and they'll give us the data on that, on that shopping center or something like that. So cities can, can see what, what's being generated based on what they did to, you know, get that, uh, project off, off the ground.
I assume that we're still using the same company that was, they can give us those numbers, right?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so, uh, just real quick on the property tax. Um, very, very strong, steady growth for, for the city. Um, we are, uh, budgeting and projecting an estimated thirty-eight point six million dollars. Um, gonna be conservative and a two percent growth, uh, for the, um, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Um, actual, uh, actual history says that the actual growth is, is, is a little bit stronger than that. Um, council member Scott, you, you asked about a, a history. This goes back to seventeen, eighteen, but we can definitely go back even further. Um, and this, this will definitely show that, that we've definitely had strong growth going back, um, from that time until now. Um, but we are gonna be, uh, uh, being a little bit more conservative going out from twenty-four, twenty-five out, out into the, to the future. Again, as I mentioned, uh, looking right now, the numbers that we're calculating show a two percent growth. And then after that, about a three percent growth.
And, and a question related to that, could you also provide us with a graph that shows the county's numbers? Because they substantially get more than we get in property tax. And the reason I'm asking that question, there's a requirement for us to, uh, bring county pockets into the city limits. And they're very poorly kept and not in good condition. And we should, as a city, be asking the county to share some of their property tax to bring those neighborhoods up to where they need to be brought. And that's stuff like streetlights, paving, um, sewer systems and et cetera.
Okay, we can definitely do that. Next slide, I wanna, uh, talk real briefly about the sales tax. Um, business and industry, which, um, in, includes a lot of the, the, the businesses that, that we are, that we are talking about right now. Obviously, is, is the biggest generator. Um, and we've all known it, known and, and seen that the, um, fulfillment centers, um, have, have been a very big, strong component of, of this. Um, conservatively, we're gonna be projecting two percent, even though the graph I'm gonna show you right now shows that the, the, the growth has been very, very much, uh, stronger than this, but I know that can't last. Um, and we've already talked about the, uh, the one-time seven million dollar, um, payment. I, I was laughing when I, when I got to Rialto because I was in another city three years ago and I was on the other end when the, the state sales tax board saying that, well, we're gonna, we're looking at this adjustment because of, of, um, of Amazon, basically. And they just kept telling everyone, we're gonna be taking money from you, but we're not sure what it is. We're gonna go through a three-year audit. And so I was on the other side, so, oh, that's not fair. They're gonna be taking money that was misallocated to a lot of cities. And so, um, that's what happened there. And now I come here and I'm like, oh, now I'm on the other side where, I said, what's that spike for? And it's like, oh, now it's the other side is that now that, all that, that audit, what, what they call an audit, which was done over the last few fiscal years because they realized they had misallocated money. Um, and so that's how Rialto had, has gotten the, that, the one-time seven million dollars for the, for the, for the, uh, current year. So sales tax, uh, again, this is going back seventeen, eighteen, but we can go back further and, and the, the growth rate is just, um, great, very, 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 very strong. Obviously, the twenty-three, twenty-four year shows that, that one-time spike. And then we're gonna bring that down and then show conservative two percent growth going out into the future. Real brief, sir?
Question.
You wanna go, you wanna go back?
Yeah, yeah, we, we just, I, I get you're going conservative, but we just did all these overlays with housing and we have all these RENA numbers that we need to kind of catch up on. And we're really building in the city, uh, you know. So I'm trying to understand how you would capture something like that here. I mean, there's been a lot of groundbreakings, we've, uh, have a lot of housing, you know, in line. Um, and it, there's just a lot of incentives to build housing in our city. Some of them even do it without even coming to this city. So my question is, you know, how does that, how are you capturing that here? I mean, you're, you're just kinda saying it's a two to three percent. But it's basically for the state, it's like a race for us to kind of catch up on housing. And they're, uh, they have policies in place that we're trying to, uh, that are mandated for cities to kind of follow. And so we're on a timeline, not just like on putting our plans together, but even on the build-outs with these, uh, these housing, uh, zones that we just did the overlay on. So how are we gonna, how are you gonna capture that here? Because we even have growth now.
I, I, I like to have a, a lot of the, the in-depth conversations with the departments regarding where are we with these? Um, cause I, I know when it comes to new developments and, and new projects coming online and all that, those will sometimes take a little bit longer than what we anticipate. So if there isn't anything, so just, just say talking about, about property tax. If there isn't anything that, that, that we can clearly say is gonna come on the rolls this year. I mean, like, like for twenty-four, twenty-five, if, if, if it's not, if, if it's not, if it hasn't been assessed, if it's not on the rolls right now and if it hasn't been assessed, then it, it's not gonna be on there, on there for, for the, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So we're gonna have to wait till.
But you're talking property tax, correct?
Yes, yes.
See, the, the, the problem with property, with, with housing is, would you not agree generally that housing becomes a bigger, new housing becomes a bigger burden to a city than it is an advantage or a benefit in sales tax?
Becau- because of the, uh, of the.
Because the cost, the cost of services.
Needs of service, yeah. Obviously, whenever, whenever you have new developments and new, and your population basically is gonna grow, obviously, there, there's gonna, there's gonna be a cost of service that needs to be.
Even though your sales tax may grow a little bit because of new housing, your, your general fund is also, eh, expenditures are gonna grow at a higher rate.
Ab- absolutely, absolutely. So I, I, so ju- just so I can hopefully an- answer, answer your question. On, on things like that, if, if they're not gonna be clear that, that, that we know we're gonna be getting them, getting them during that, that fiscal year, I said, you know, I'd rather just wait and let's just, you know, again, if something is, is, something becomes more clear halfway through the year or through three months into the year, we can come back to the council and say, this is now gonna happen. We need it, we can add more money or something's coming on and, and there's additional cost of service that, that we need to go and look at our costs and, and, um, adjust those to.
And it's simply the UT tax, right?
What's that?
The hotel tax, the, the.
Uh, no, so the, uh, uh, UUT tax is the, is the, uh, additional tax that, that are on all of the, all, all the bills?
UTE.
No, the hotel, I was talking about the hotel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just, we're starting our second hotel, we just did one that have really high rates of occupancy.
Where's the second one?
The second one's coming up. Okay.
Okay.
So they, they have really high occupancy rates. So I was just wondering if, is that captured within the sales tax too?
Uh, no, uh, the, um.
It's a different?
The, uh, um, hotel tax is a, uh, separate, uh, item on the, in the, uh.
Got it.
In our overall revenue scheme. Uh, I'm just, I'm focusing on the, on the, uh, biggest ones.
Got it.
On the biggest, uh, areas. Um, on the utility users' tax, uh, again, this is another one and, and I will show you that on the, on the, uh, on the next slide that, that's got the, uh, uh, history and the, uh, growth. Um, this one's really, really, um, increased a lot, especially over the last, uh, over the last five years. Um, now generating a little bit over nineteen million dollars. Um, again, I'm gonna go with a two percent growth. Um, that's less than what, what the, what the history is showing. Um, and again, it's, it's all, it's a tax for all the different, uh, utilities that are, that are being paid for, uh, uh, residents and businesses, um, in the city. Just a, a one note that the one area that is going down is gonna be the telephone. Um, because people are getting away from landlines and things like that. So that's the one area that will continue to, to decrease. But everything else is, is gonna, uh, is, is continuing to increase.
Do you have a detailed cost of that somewhere?
Uh, I don't have it in, in there, but I, but I, like I mentioned earlier, we've actually, we've got a, a twenty-year history and it, it's got all the five or six categories, so we can send that to the council.
So just so the public understands, what are the, can you outline all the utilities that we have that are in the UUT tax? And also which ones went up and which ones are going down?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So, so, um.
Do you have that now?
Yeah, uh, so we've got the gas, the electric, the water, uh, the wastewater, uh, and then the telephone slash, um, cellphone, um, areas. So those are, those are all the utilities, um, that.
And electricity probably has dropped because of solar.
No, actually, the gas and electric has been the, the biggest increase.
But is that because of growth in a city versus you have to lose some of it because of solar?
Well.
Cause you don't pay UUT on solar.
It's probably a combination, but, um.
It's skyrocketing, yeah. I mean, look at how much, uh, you're paying for electricity and gas compared to five, ten years ago, so.
Right.
Yeah, I could see where that numbers.
Not if you're on solar, you're not.
Well, that's true.
But, but, but you're, you're absolutely right with, with the act, with the, I mean, the, the cost for electricity has increased so much over the last five or ten years. So that automatically is just gonna increase the, the, uh, UUT tax because it, it's a percentage of that. So tho- those numbers are gonna, are gonna increase, um, a lot, so. Which is, goes back to the very, very strong growth going back from nineteen, twenty all the way through, um, basically twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, we're being conservative, uh, even in twenty-three, twenty-four, showing it's gonna be flat. Actually, we're showing flat through twenty-four, twenty-five, um, about nineteen point one million dollars. Uh, and then slowly doing a, a two percent increase going forward. So, um, I definitely think that that, those numbers will actually, um, in- increase. Um, but we're, we're being conservative right.
But a lot of that depends on the growth of our city too as well, whether we continue to grow or whether, uh, we maintain what we currently have in terms of our population
That's true.
or anticipate the additional population in, in the city too as well. And then also bringing in different businesses, commercial, retail and others will impact this chart.
Absolutely. Okay, in summary, for the general fund, uh, we are projecting right now a hundred and, little over a hundred and fifty-one million dollars. Um, again, that's gonna be down from the, from the current year, again, because of the, the one-time drop in the, uh, sales tax. Um, and as we keep talking about conservative estimates. Um, this was information that was provided to you in the, in the, in the packet, just showing our overall revenues um, for the last, uh, three years. Um, and if you look at the bottom, you, you can, you can see that, uh, the revenue is going, dropping from a hundred and fifty-eight to a hundred and fifty-one because of the, uh, one-time sales tax drop. Very briefly, uh, high-level view, talk about the general fund expenditures and then we will get into the, uh, department budgets. For the, uh, proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget, um, the, uh, projected expenditures of a hundred and forty-eight point three million dollars. Uh, approximately about four percent, uh, increased over the twenty-three, twenty-four budgeted year. Um, and as, as you can see, the, um, the personnel costs obviously make up a very large, uh, percentage of that. Uh, they are increasing about fourteen million dollars. Um, a lot of that has, well, the two biggest components of that, uh, one are the, um, salary increases. The, um, we're factoring in the, um, MOU agreements that, that have, that are, are now in place. And obviously, the increased purse costs that, uh, continue to, uh, put, uh, put a little bit of strain on, on city budgets. Um, the services and supplies, um, and then transfers out. I know transfers out takes a big drop, uh, but that was because in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, um, there was the, uh, uh, transfers out that were finishing up, uh, for the police station, um, got in, getting that done. So, and we removed a, a lot of the transfers to the CIP. Um, so those aren't in there, but we still wanna give the council the opportunity to, um, allocate monies for CIP projects as we talk about the reserves and using those one-times monies for a lot of the CIP projects going forward, so.
Or like a project that we may need a, uh, training tower for the fire department, which we don't have in the city, right? That can be projected in this.
Absolutely, a- ab- absolutely. Uh, just real, real brief, just a, a visual look of, of how, how the departments lay, lay out in terms of, uh, the cost for the general fund, um, police and fire, obviously, the, the two biggest operations. They, they account for fifty percent of the, uh, of the general fund budget. Um, and then the other, um, operating departments, uh, non-departmental, uh, is, is, is a big, is a big piece only because we've got the, uh, uh, pension payment in there, the, the, uh, UAL payment. Um, and actually, and then also, uh, some tax sharing agreements that we have, uh, in there. So, um, we put, we put that in that, in that category. So overall, just, uh, kind of summarizing what we've talked about on the, um, uh, budget side for the expenditures, uh, about a two to four percent, uh, increase on our costs. Uh, what we're gonna talk about now, uh, we're gonna be getting into the, uh, personnel, the additional personnel request that the departments are gonna be, um, asking for. Overall, it's a, it's a net increase of fourteen positions that the departments will be presenting right now. Um, and the other, the, now, this, what the departments are gonna be talking about in, in terms of what they're, what they're asking for, for new positions, that is not factored at all into the numbers that we have been talking about, about where our revenues are, where our expenditures are. I mentioned earlier that there, that the, that the budget that we are presenting right now, uh, is not only balanced, but, uh, there's a three, about a three million dollar surplus, that's status quo right now. So the information that the departments, we've talked about in terms of the cost of new positions, that is not factored into the numbers that we've been presenting right now.
And where does that money come out of if we approved them?
So if, so what, what, what stat, what, what the departments are gonna be talking about in totality, uh, all of the positions, those fourteen positions, um, in totality, it's about one point nine million dollars. If the council were to say, yes, that's great, go ahead, add all those to the budget, uh, because right now the budget is, has a surplus of about three million dollars, uh, these positions could be added, and we could still present a balanced budget. The council can still approve a balanced budget, basically, there's a three million dollar surplus right now. If the council approved all these, all these positions, that would take about one point nine out of the three million. So to answer your question, that, that, that's where there, there's capacity to be, to be able to add these positions.
It, it shows two point six million dollars from all funds and two million forty-nine thousand from general fund. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, so at, as we get into, to that page, um, there was further, uh, discussion that, that we had, uh, regarding the.
You're, you're proposing to pay these out of one-time money or re- reoccurring revenue?
Reoccurring.
Revenue.
Yes, yes, yeah, we, I, I, I would, I would, I, I would, I would never add, I would never come up here and advocate, um, saying that we're gonna hire people and we're gonna use one-time monies for, no.
But you don't have an overage in your budget to pay for this, eventually, it, it, ultimately, it comes out of reserves, correct?
Yeah, if, if you're, if you're going back to the, to the, to the slide, uh, that, that, that showed in, 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 in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that, that the, uh, that the lines cross, uh, then absolutely, then, then that's where, that's where you continue to look at where we're at on our projections, what, what we're really spending. Are we, are we too conservative with revenues, do we need to adjust them forward? Then, then you, you look at this, you look at these situations consistently.
And, and I, and I notice on this list, while some departments may be eliminating some personnel, they're actually replacing them with hi- higher-cost personnel, so they're really not eliminating personnel, correct?
Well, when, when, when the department is saying that they're eliminating, they're, they're, they're basically looking at the structure that they have and, and, and a position that they have.
If I'm eliminating two and replacing them with two higher-paid people, I'm not eliminating.
Well, you, how, how, how we're trying to explain it is, we're eliminating two positions that we will not fund anymore, but, but yes, that department wants.
We're adding on two positions that we will fund at a higher cost.
Yes, yes, that, that's.
Let's tell it like it is here, let's be transparent.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, um, okay, so those are, again, talking about what, what's in the budget right now, the M O U increases, um, and then the, the, the increased cost of personnel due to the M O Us and, and, uh, additional personnel costs. So, um, as we're just talking about, there's the, uh, new positions, uh, that are gonna be added, that was in your, um, handout. Um, before we get into that, I just wanna make, make a note, cause you, you had mentioned about the, about the two million dollars, that was the, the additionals, um, and it will show, when we get to this slide, um, in the parks, recreation, and community services, there was more discussion. Um, and, um, what I, what I lined out was, uh, reclassing, uh, two supervisors to full-time. Um, it's basically reclassing two supervisors to one full-time manager. So in, in it, instead of it being a hundred and fifteen thousand, it's only gonna be nine thousand eight hundred. Um, so the, um, the overall cost of the general fund is one point nine. I believe in, in your sheet that you have, it, it says two million, so tha- that's why I've talked about, um, here where I'm saying the cost of the general fund is, is one point nine million. So we can talk a little bit about that more when we get to that department, um, to talk about that personnel request. So you have that sheet as part of the, uh, uh, the budget document that was given to you last week. Um, so departments now will talk about, um, actually, we, we have it here, so this, if this is the information. Um, so we'll, 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 we'll start with the city clerk, just a quick overview of kind of what they're requesting. If council has any questions of that department, um, obviously, they can ask them, and then, um, it's, if there's any questions regarding the line item budgets, then, uh, obviously, council can feel free to, to ask those questions too, and we'll just move through the departments and then, um, talk about it summarizing at, at the end.
Be- before you start with that, it's my understanding that the police department has included in their request three positions that were approved in last year's budget, but were not funded due to the inaction of the assistant city manager, previous assistant city manager, is that correct?
So, I think what, it, it, my understanding is that it was, it was, it was approved by the assistant city manager at that time, it, it never got approved to, by the city council.
It was actually approved by the city council and asked that it come forward at mid-year, which it never came forward.
Okay, right, but, but, but it never got approved by, by the, by the, by the city council, so that, that's why it's being presented in this budget, because.
Well, I'll, I'll, we can agree to disagree on that because the city council did approve those positions. They just were not funded because of the.
Oh, okay.
Assistant city manager.
Okay, then, then I'm.
So I beg to differ with you.
Okay, no, I, I, I'm, I'm just going by what, what I heard, is that it was approved, but it was never formally approved by the city council at, at a, at a, at a council meeting.
Cause we had no mid-year budget to approve it, the fund.
Right, so, but.
But the positions were approved.
Yes, yes, a- absolutely.
Okay.
One, one of my priorities, I, I think the last budget workshop that we had was, our priority is customer service, and with any personnel changes or really with the budget, um, you know, our, my kind of vision was to try to align kind of everything with, you know, how we are able to kind of better serve the public, but I didn't get a sense of any of that here, and I'm hoping in, in explaining the positions, I'd like the uh, department has to actually talk about customer service and how these new positions are actually going to assist with, uh, helping the public.
Absolutely, a great point, okay. Okay, let's, um, let's start with the city clerk, um. Madam City Clerk, if you wanna, if, or if, if there's any questions on the city council or.
If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
This one's straightforward.
All I'm doing in my department is reclassifying the two people that I have in here.
Well, I, I, I guess my question, and I don't necessarily need it here tonight, but we're being asked to reclassify some positions and stuff, and we don't really see or know why. So I would like maybe you guys to send us explanations of why we're reclassing, reclassing these positions, how it makes things better for the city, let's get into the customer service question. Um, um, and, and what, what changes that, but probably the workshop isn't the appropriate place to, to do that, I don't know.
Yes, I can do that.
I, I know that was part, part of my concern when, uh, the vision was brought out, um, one of our consent items, was that, with, with kind of the, the, uh, the vision that was kind of written out, it didn't really include anything about customer service on there. Uh, it was something that we had in a previous agenda item, but I, I would thought it would be reflected here since it was part of some of our comments that we made that, at the, uh, the council meeting. And it was basically just like a guideline on how you're gonna put your budget together, uh, from the previous administration, I guess. Uh, but I just, the emphasis was always customer service that was never included in there. That's what I was, I was hoping to see a little bit on here, but I didn't really get to see it.
Well, I, I know, I, I believe departments talked a little bit during, in the narrative portion of, of the, of the budget information that was sent out to the, to the city council, talking about the goals and, and, um, accomplishments, um, but, but we can definitely go back and, and have departments focus on that and, and send that information out to, out to the council.
Well, I, 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 I guess my concern about this whole thing is, I'm not really in favor of fourteen new positions. I, I think we need to get to mid-year and figure that out. What I am in favor of is any department that should have gotten positions at the last mid-year, like the police department, there may be others, that those positions be approved and be funded. But I'm sorry, I, 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 I just see us headed down a, a, a road of continuing to add more employees on in this city. Our customer service isn't getting any better, and I don't see a plan for stuff. For instance, you've got an information technology person in here, what is the plan for the G I S? And why aren't we contracting that out to Ezra or somebody versus having a person? Because I guarantee you, if you bring one person in, you're gonna have to add four more to them. And we're just getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and I don't see a lot of improvement. So I, Ms. Mr. Milheiser, I think we should be going department by department, and I know you've got Henry doing some stuff and evaluating departments and looking at positions and seeing where we need to reclass positions and where we need to absolutely add people on. But just to be adding people on for the sake of adding people on, I'm not in favor of it.
Yes, I, I just wanna say, uh, I agree with my colleagues, and, and one of my biggest concerns, as was the same as both of my colleagues, was I don't see anything on here, um, indicating that our customer service, which was one of our biggest priorities, will be addressed. I know I've talked to, uh, uh, Chief Parks, and he has some plans in place, and he has some, some programs that he's gonna be, uh, putting his crew through, but I don't see any other department taking any steps, so all this reclassifying and no, uh, no vision of how we're really gonna be providing better customer service by taking away some positions and consolidating them into one, I see that as less service instead of more, so I'm really concerned about that path.
Okay, so how, how about as, as the departments come up, they, they can focus on, on that, as they're talking about what positions they're gonna be adding, they can focus on, on that, on that customer, uh, customer service.
That should be the priority of why we're doing.
Absolutely.
Any kind of increases, because that was one of the biggest things that this council asked for, and I don't see that anywhere. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, um, okay, so, uh, the next one was human resources, um.
Are we done with the clerks?
I'm sorry, oh, I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't think there was.
All, all I was doing was reclass, and he asked me to send that to you guys.
The only thing I'd, I'd like to add in reference to the, uh, city clerk is that, uh, I, hopefully, that we can look at the veterans department, I know that it's under community block grants right now, and it's separate, but that's something that we might wanna look at in terms of putting it under the clerk's office, uh, that position that we have, and that would be the ideal place, cause we need to provide a lot more services to our veterans, uh, that we're not currently doing right now, that I feel we're not currently doing. And if it fell under the, the, uh, city clerk, at least we would be able to monitor, evaluate, and assess what that person is really doing in terms of providing the services, although we're funding them under C B G's funds right now. That's just my suggestion. In terms of the future, as we move forward with this.
Good point, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Temp and members of the city council. Um, the request before you tonight is an update to the human resources and risk management organizational structure. The update doesn't request for additional F T E, rather, it, um, is a result of a year-long review of the human resources and risk management department, and, um, it will be, uh, reviewing the positions that we have currently that are vacant, which is the senior human resources analyst, as well as the human resources and risk management specialist. The request before you tonight is to replace the vacant H R, um, specialist as well as the H R, um, senior H R analyst with that of an H R manager as well as a human resources analyst, sorry. Senior analyst with a, with a human resources manager. I'm requesting this because of the constantly changing landscape of human resources and risk management, including the regulatory requirements, mandated training, and navigating the best practices in human resources and risk management. We have to have a close oversight of one hundred and fifty-two open workers' compensation claims, fifty-seven general liability claims, and forty-four open recruitments, which have fifty-nine part-time and eighty-seven full-time vacancies. So that is my request for you tonight.
Did you provide us with any documents? Cause there's no tab for you in here.
So they're, uh, they're under the, uh, administration, so, uh, we, 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 we put together city council, city manager, city clerk, uh, human resources, um, and then, I believe, it's finance and, um, I T. So, um, those are all under the, uh, administration tab. Sorry.
Okay, so here again, from my stand, my standpoint.
Page thirty.
You're, you're eliminating positions and replacing them with higher-paying positions, I'm not sure why.
So the, in reviewing of our current one hundred and fifty-two workers' compensation claims that have, um, mo- many of them are right now as indemnity claims, as well as our fifty-seven general liability claims and forty-four open recruitments, having a higher-level position to have that close oversight and management of those positions will be better customer service for our current internal departments and being able to react to those, um, needs of our departments and, um, giving the higher-level, uh, requirements that they're gonna need, um, for those positions.
Don't you contract now?
No.
Most of the services for workman's comp and.
Our third-party administrator handles our general liability as well as our workers' compensation claims, but managing and being able to make strategic, uh, decisions on each of those claims are, is handled here in human resources and risk management.
Okay, and does the city manager concur with this recommendation?
In looking at it, it, it appears to me to be somewhat, uh, i- improving the, it will allow us to improve the productivity of the department, yes.
And that would help with customer service too as well, that's correct?
Yes, my customers are our departments, and being able to react to our department's needs.
And let me, la- last question, would there be an issue if you were asked to wait to fill and fund those positions mid-year versus right now? And, and currently in your department, are all your positions filled?
Are, there's currently one senior, um, human resources analyst that's vacant, and a human resources and risk management specialist that's vacant. Uh, the, the idea for the human resources and risk management analyst, the request would be for mainly to be housed within our police and our fire departments, to be able to assist them with their recruitments and their general liability and workers' compensation needs. Uh, if any of those positions needed to be filled, it would be that one first, I'd like.
So that's a pretty critical position.
Yes.
But what about the others, could they wait till mid-year?
Uh, I, they can if, if needed, yes.
I guess the other.
The other one is a reclass.
And you're currently understaffed at this point, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's all the questions I have.
Information technology, Jonathan?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Uh, we worked with Ezra and different departments to identify ways to leverage the GIS system within their departments to provide more efficient ways to communicate, uh, with the public, to promote transparency, community engagement, as well as the ability to make data-driven decisions. Uh, during this time that we met with, uh, Ezra and the department heads, we developed a, uh, seventy-five-page roadmap to help get these, uh, departments to where they wanna go, uh, in particularly with, with the app development, uh, to be able to, uh, reach out to those, um, customers, citizens. Uh, if you look at surrounding cities, um, say, Riddens, for example, uh, they have a full-time staff of three in their GIS alone. We're only requesting one at this time, but that one position, be a person of, uh, experience, have that experience needed to be able to help develop all the applications that are needed for all of the departments, and, uh, help to maximize the city realto's investment in the technology and provide a better service to the community.
So, this seventy-five-page document, did you provide that to the city council?
I do not, no, no.
Is there a reason you haven't, or you cannot?
No, I can, I can provide it. Yeah, I actually have it here with me. I can make copies and, or...
Well, if you could, if you could send it to us, that, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Is it not true, though, that by adding one GIS administrator, which is a pretty high-paid position, and I realize that's total compensation, but that's still a pretty high-paid position? How, how many people do you currently have in your department?
Eight on the IT side and four, four or five with the network, realto network side.
So, you have eight and four or five. And, uh, is it not true that in order to add an administrator, you'll have to eventually add others on to complement it?
It would be advantageous for us to do that, that we bring in the person with this.
Let me ask you this question. There's a number of things, for instance, permitting in the city. In fact, we're mandated by state law to have a online permit system for solar permits, which we do not have. Um, it's my understanding through an email I read over the weekend that that's your responsibility in your department. Can you tell me why that hasn't been accomplished and we're in violation of state law?
That, that's a, a portion of my department?
Are you responsible for implementing the Trackett, or not, not Trackett, but the Tyler ERP system in Development Services that will take the place of Trackett?
Yes, so, yes, so that...
Okay, so, why hasn't that been accomplished?
So, that, the primary focus of that project is to, like you mentioned, migrate the, the Trackett system.
Right.
Over to the new system.
Right.
But with that being said, there's been setbacks on that, and we just, as of last week, got the contractor in place to be able to, uh, provide us with the assistance to get that accomplished.
What would those setbacks be?
Just staffing.
Staffing on our side?
Correct.
In your department or in Development Services?
No, in our department, in the IT department. The, the person that was spearheading that project is out on leave.
Okay, and how many other situations do we have like that?
Well, there's a similar situation with, uh, tying up the, the finance system with the ERP, but in same situation, we got a contractor to come in and assist with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Community, um, yeah, sorry, community development?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and council. Koby Cataldi, Director of Community Development, want to have two positions here that are targeted and focused in, uh, customer service. The first three line items, you'll see an office specialist, an intern, and two aides. The, you'll see an elimination of those three part-time positions proposed and replaced with one permanent full-time office specialist position. The customer service division kinda spans community development overall across all divisions, but within building safety, we have a very specific team that does phone calls, emails, and customer communications, and we have, uh, three part-time positions and one full-time position. The part-time positions are difficult to recruit, they're difficult to retain, and they're difficult to train, and there's a high volatility of turnover in part-time positions. To, um, produce a more stable customer service environment, we are proposing the one full-time office specialist, so we eliminate that, that unstable, um, revolving door in those part-time positions. The second position is a, we have a vacant administrative, um, assistant in the department. We currently have two other admin assistants that service the department and support it department-wide. We, uh, do not feel that, that this third admin assistant is actually as valuable to the department or the city, um, but, 'cause what we are dearly missing is a housing administrator. And we have a number of different programs, half a dozen or more. Uh, we do not have a housing specialist, housing analyst position in the city. Uh, there's not one recruited for or hired or available in the community development department. And so, what I'm proposing to do is not ask for a new position to be added. What I'm asking to do is to have one vacant position and, and reclass that into an admin analyst position. And that admin analyst position will be focused on housing programs, housing services, housing grants. Um, those grants include Cal Home, RDA, housing loans, uh, mobile home inspections, mobile home repair, first-time home buyer, home repair programs, housing grants, affordable housing projects, NSP fund management, um, including housing element programs that would need to be implemented. Uh, the last item is purely a, a technical terminology. There's a planning aid position that's full-time in the department. That's really not, um, that's indicative of a part-time position. This is not a part-time position, it's a full-time position. And in the planning industry, uh, the planning aid is not really a recruitable or, uh, worthy position to apply in department. It's really, uh, the, the term is really planning technician, so that is more of a technical cleanup item. Uh, as we recruit for that position and retain a, a planner, it would be of more of a technician level, not an aide level. So, that's just, there's no increase to that line item. It's just merely a technical term to use by the industry. With any, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think when we're trying to compare different positions across different agencies and different studies, sometimes we find some of the positions aren't able to be comparable. Do the actual descriptions change, or is it just the title?
In the, for the planning aid to the planning technician, the description would pretty much remain the same, and it'd be more of a title change to match the industry.
So, it, it would be able, we would be able to compare it to other positions in the industry?
Yeah, other positions in other cities that have the same.
Okay, so when we do these studies on the terms of class comp, like, they're actually gonna be comparable to?
Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanna make sure, 'cause I, I know when we change titles, sometimes we end up in this position where we just can't compare the positions.
That's true.
Okay.
So, do we currently have an economic development manager?
We do not. That has, that is a recruitment that's underway, um, and it is in the first candidate screening process. So, we do have a list of candidates that are being screened for eligibility.
Do we have applicants?
Pardon me?
Do we have applicants?
Yes, we do.
So, is that the person that's responsible for, uh, selling her surplus properties?
Yes, sir.
And there's nobody else handling surplus properties as we speak?
Uh, well, that is lying in the hands of myself and also our real estate, uh, services through our attorney. Uh, however, we did have a grant through SCAG. We did have a grant through SCAG that we, for a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars to retain those services. However, the state did, uh, claw that back and has not released that fund to us. We are approved for the grant, but we have not been released the funds. And that grant would be to secure, uh, real estate professional services, to do RFPs and put those properties out for, uh, bid and disposition.
Well, just kind of, I'm kinda curious, why do we have to pay a real estate person to do that? Because they basically work on commission. So, you enter into a contract with them, they list the properties for sale, they sell them, they either get three or six percent, uh, depending on what the deal is that, that's cut. So, why aren't we just listing the properties with somebody, an outside reali- realtor and, and, um, trying to get some, we keep talking about arena numbers and houses, but yet we've done nothing with our surplus properties, including the former J and K site, which we insisted that he vacate, because we had a plan for it, and it's been sitting here for, I don't know, two or three years now.
Yeah. We, uh, we, you know, staff can certainly, and when I say staff, since we have vacancies in economic development, uh, with the E, with the economic development manager, we can put together an RFP to dispose of a, a list of properties for the city. Those properties will have to go through the Surplus Land Act as, as required, 'cause not all properties have gone through that process at this time. So, the intention is obviously to have the economic devon, uh, development manager come on board to do that type of staff-level work, and in the event, uh, when we don't have that, we would outsource, and we happen to have a grant through SCAG in order to do that.
We, we haven't had an economic development manager since Greg Lance left. That, how long ago did he leave? Five years? Huh?
Ten years.
Ten years ago.
Okay.
Worse than I thought.
Yes, sir.
I don't know. So, uh, you heard me ask the questions on the, uh, the online permit system for solar that we're in violation of.
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, and while there may not be a, uh, penalty for being in violation, nonetheless, we're still in violation, and some of us council members are getting letters from people. So, I assume there's a class action lawsuit or some kind of lawsuit following, behind it. Um, so, I wanna know what we can do to get a system online.
So, we, uh, we were on, uh, a phone call today, as a matter of fact, with the developers and owners of the Solar Apps Plus product. Um, I've included, uh, IT in these conversations as well. Next week, we have a meeting with them to talk about how we license, control, access, and then configure the system so we can turn it on here locally in, in realto. And so, we're gonna go through a conversation on the twentieth, uh, of this month to talk about those next steps.
Okay, and that's outside of, uh, ERP and Tyler?
It is. It would be an independent, you know, one-off, and that would be, uh, our bridge until we get our Tyler system fully developed and go live, which is expected or anticipated for January twenty-five.
We've been working on that about ten years too. In case you didn't know, long before you came here.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I have one more question. Give your light on, Joe. No. The, the, uh, has there been an increase in the ADUs? And what are we doing to assist and make sure that these get expedited?
Uh, um, I, I don't have the data in front of me to talk, to speak to year-to-year increases in the volume of ADUs. Generally, since the legislation came in through the state to, um, they make it a ministerial type action at local jurisdictions, ADUs have increased from year to year to year, uh, and junior ADUs along with that. Um, I can provide you a full report over the last four years of what ADUs and junior ADUs, where they have climbed up to. Um, but we do have in-house plan checking services, in-house, local staff, that we do, that focuses on residential plan check processes and projects, and ADUs is, is their primary objective to, to work on.
And are, and what, are we in compliance with the timeframes for processing those?
Great, as, as far as I know, standing here, yes, we are.
And what kind of assistant do you have in the, uh, uh, for the bilingual community, for the, uh, Spanish-speaking community? Do you have?
Yeah.
A package that's put out? What, what kind of material do you have?
We do, we do have materials in, uh, English and Spanish. We do have staff, our staff, our on-checking staff that does speak Spanish, our permitting tech staff that does speak Spanish, and so, if you come by the permit, um, counter, you can, you can hear Spanish spoken all throughout the day, as we work with customers regularly, either over the phone or in person.
Okay. So, that kinda ties in with the, uh, customer service and how we're trying to make sure that.
Yes.
That, uh, these positions that we're increasing are adding to the bottom line, the bottom line being, uh, better customer service.
Yes, sir. And, uh, we, we heard you loud and well last year in twenty-three when community development wasn't the shining star of customer service. We fully understood that. Um, we have implemented a new customer service survey system that the customers have QR codes, they have it in, on-premise, they have it online, they have it on, access to our emails, our websites, and everything else. We don't get a high-volume level of customer survey responses, but the nine out of the ten that we do get are all very positive. I just did receive one today, uh, that was for planning services, and it was the top, the highest score is a five, lowest score is a one, um, and it was a series of fours and fives for that survey. Um, I can run a report on those customer surveys as well and provide them to you if you wish.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, Koby. By adding this, uh, additional staff, uh, would that help with the permitting process that, that we need to continue to improve? Because, uh, time is money for a lot of the developers and other business people who wanna go through a permitting process through our city. Uh, is this gonna help us in part of that process?
Um, it, it undoubtedly will, um, and throughout the course of the permitting process, there's a lot of communications between staff and an applicant, any applicant, developer or mom and pops, whoever that may be. What, one little data point that is not well heard of is that community development will receive around six thousand phone calls a month to our department. Now, four thousand of those may go to our building safety division, 'cause they have most of the permitting activity based in, in that division. But for six thousand phone calls a month, and we have a team of three or four people, it does tap into all twenty-plus phones, uh, but that is a very high volume. And we have gone through with, with CDIT a number of different strategies of rollover strategies, so people are picking up a live person online each and every time with minimal wait times. We also have a, a system that, a customer service system that identifies when a customer comes to the counter, they do check in, what are, what service are they soliciting at the counter, and there's a clock, how long has each customer been waiting for, a building permit service, a planning service, a business license service, and we have all those reports that we can run as well for you. And we'll see wait times that are six minutes, seven minutes, and a high wait time could be something like fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question now that we're already talking about, uh, customer service here. Uh, a one-stop-shop center.
Yes, sir.
How, how would that get you kind of, let your services out the door quicker?
A one-stop, I, I'm a, a strong believer in one-stop shops. Um, um, I, I was instrumental in developing the one-stop shop for Orange County in San Ana at their headquarters, and it's very robust in multiple departments. County tax collector and all other departments are in it as well. Uh, the city would be better served if it had a one-stop, a physical presence one-stop. Um, we are building a virtual presence one-stop with our technology, with our Tyler technology application, but the physical presence one-stop, uh, provides a lot of resources at one doorstep. There's no doubt the city has an ability to be more resourceful to the customers if we are all there together. It's, it almost is, uh, sounds obvious to everybody, but I've seen it in action and have built one, and it works, you know, very, very well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Fire department?
Good evening, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Uh, Chris Jensen, uh, speaking tonight on behalf of Chief Parks. Uh, our budget focused on, um, three main, uh, areas: increased outreach and education and workshops, personnel development and succession planning, disaster preparedness and training, and restructuring of the Community Risk Reduction Division and programs. Uh, in our budget request, uh, we had, uh, requested a total of, of, um, five positions, and I'd first like to just start from, from the bottom on this, uh, because it'll make more sense as I go forward. Our emergency medical services coordinator, uh, we restructured that into our, um, restricted fund account, two oh nine, which is emergency medical services. And the reason that's important is because then that freed that money that was, um, used in the general fund to fund the emergency manager at a lower rate. Uh, the emergency manager, uh, request, um, as you council knows, we went through a series of, uh, disaster preparedness document preparation and implementation with our local hazard mitigation plan, our emergency operations plan, our continuity of operations plan, and continuity of government, and disaster recovery plan. Within those documents, there are several items of work that need to be done over the next several years in preparation of these documents, which are required to be revised every five years. This position would further provide grant applications, um, prepare and institute the grants, and contract coordination, um, with, uh, such items such as shelters, uh, within our community. This is a community-centered type position in that it helps internal, our internal customers, um, with their requirements for their position and roles during emergency operation center, as well as community and public education and community emergency response teams throughout our community. The second added position, um, is our training captain, and this... The second added position, um, is our training captain, and this stemmed from our internal survey from our strategic planning process. And this, uh, position would focus on, uh, training program management, uh, actual instructor curriculum, and preparing our emergency responders, uh, for their required and statutory training requirements, uh, throughout the year. This position is also, um, detailed to be funded out of account two zero nine. The next position is our senior analyst position.
Excuse me, can you, can you tell us what fund, what two zero nine is?
I'm sorry, two oh nine is our EMS account. It's a restricted fund.
And what, where does that money come from?
Uh, from our, uh, from the GEMT and our EMS, uh, recovery, emergency medical services recovery.
Is that ambulance?
Ambulance service, yes, sir.
Oh. Okay. Continue, I'll have a question when you get done.
Okay. Our senior analyst, uh, position, uh, that we're proposing is, um, also funded out of two oh nine, and primarily will be focusing on, on training, operations, personnel development, and community engagement, and the requirements, um, that are found within those, uh, programs. The next position that we requested was for a fire plans examiner. This is a customer forward-facing position. Uh, we currently utilize a contract, uh, for this position, um, and prior to that, our assistant fire marshal and fire marshal were performing, uh, those functions and roles. Uh, this position is also projected to recover, uh, the costs associated, uh, with the personnel cost, um, currently being projected by community development at approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, um, for this ne- next fiscal year. The next position is our fire inspector position, and that position, um, is, um, uh, to perform construction-related and operational permit inspections out in our community. Um, and that is also projected to recover the costs associated with the salary, uh, projected from our construction permitting process and our operational permits, which we have approximately sixteen hundred annual operational permits that have, uh, fees attached to them through user fees, and currently is projected to recover at a rate of a hundred and thirty-four thousand. However, because that position right now is, we don't have that position, our recovery rate, um, is showing much lower. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, my, my question to you is, um, how do you justify paying for a captain, a senior analyst, and a medical services coordinator out of ambulance fees?
Um, the.
So, in other words, you're, we're making money off of, uh, off of the ambulance service?
Correct.
We're making a profit, a huge profit.
And we're recovering, uh, costs through our, um, recovery program, yeah.
But are you actually recovering costs or are you just making a profit? Because first off, you have an ambulance, uh, subscription that many of us subscribe to. I've subscribed to it thirty-four years ago. Before, it said you had a right to bill Medicare also. So, that's a self-insured policy to cover ambulance services in the event that a resident needs it, correct?
I believe so, correct.
Okay, so now we're running ambulance service, we're not only collecting money off the ambulance subscription, you're collecting money from the insurance carrier too, even without the resident's permission. And then we're making money on that, and we're paying for positions out of that. I'm a little concerned about that. And I'm going to ask the city attorney to look into it because it would seem to me that cost recovery is cost recovery for the ambulance service, not to have a system that, where the city's making a profit and then it's paying for their employees. Doesn't make sense to me. You follow me? Mr. Bell?
Yes, and we will, we will work with legal counsel to provide you with those.
Because generally, you have to be able, if, if you charge a fee or a service to a resident, you have to be able to justify that fee, and you generally cannot charge more than the cost of that service. But it seems like that's what we're doing.
Understood, sir. We'll look into that and provide a response.
So, I, I am just curious. So, you have a total of one, two, three, four, five new positions. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And do we have locations for those individuals to be housed if we, if we were to hire them?
Well.
And you are not eliminating any positions this year, are you?
No, sir, we're not projecting to, no.
Okay, so I thought I heard that you were eliminating positions, but obviously you're not. So, do we have a place to put all these employees?
So, in, uh, in response to that, as you know, right now, we have somewhat limited space, um, but we have looked at areas that we can house additional staffing, um, and some of the offices, um, could be made into dual offices.
Okay. All right, okay, that's my question.
And you meant limited space because of the accident that just happened out here too as well, right? With the car running into the fire department?
Well, we have limited space, and not so much from that, uh, that's on the operations side, but, um, we have, um, fire suppression staff that is in on, um, light duty, they're filling certain office spaces that we currently have, um, in the admin side of the station.
And, and I just wanted to, on, on the cost recovery, we do also provide waivers to those who qualify too as well, right? We're not out automatically charging everybody, right? If anybody has ambulance service that they require, there is sometimes, uh, if they qualify, there is a waiver that they can get without having them charged. Is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, I don't know that answer directly, but I will provide a response to it.
Thank you.
I know one of the, the issues is the fee study for, for you. I know, uh, I think I was in one discussion where, um, you could possibly collect even more funds or a fee study to be created with the ambulance, mostly because we're one of the lowest, what I'm hearing is that we're one of the lowest, uh, uh, fees for ambulance service in the region, is what I'm hearing. Do you know how far this fee study is going and if it's going to be completed anytime soon?
Um, I, I know it's, it's the county rate and, and how they view the ambulance fees, um, regionally. Um, my understanding is it's still in progress, and they're working through, um, how to present that information. And, um, as you know, Chief Park has, uh, been heavily involved in that discussion, and we'll be bringing that forward.
You can't base your fees based on what your competition is doing or what another agency's doing. You have to base your fees on the cost of that service.
Yeah, especially as it relates to the recovery of costs. That's correct.
So, that would, that, that, that fee study is still yet to be completed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we won't really know what's going to come out of it.
Correct.
And then the additional staff, uh, would help with, with the possibility of growth in our city too as well to make sure that we continue to provide the excellent, uh, services that the fire department is, is currently providing right now. Is that correct?
Yes, currently, the positions that we're proposing, as it, as it relates in particular to fire prevention, um, we have a, a demand need, uh, very similar to community development. Uh, permits are increasing, construction is continuing to increase, and these positions are helping to stabilize our, uh, performance criteria for fire prevention.
Right. I just hope in, 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 as we look at the future and, and the growth in our city and the fire department is that, uh, we have a training tower that would be available for our firefighters in the future, that we incorporate that somewhere in the budget, uh, in the years to come. It would be very helpful.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have one more question. I did see that you mentioned the ISO rating. How far are we to getting to ISO rating one?
Right now, the ISO rating, as it relates to, um, our entrances, uh, here in the city, we're currently at a two. Um, we're approximately nine or ten points away from a one. Uh, most of that relates to a truck company, um, an additional truck company.
You're one tiller away, aren't you?
One tiller away, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got three more departments. I know we're running up against the, uh, time, but I, we'll, we'll, uh, get through these, uh, quickly and then wrap up. Uh, maintenance and facilities?
It's up to whatever council wants to do, if they want to recess.
It's six o'clock now, so we have three left. I, I don't know what the procedure is here in the city, but I would, I would suggest we recess the workshop to go to closed session, come back, have a regular meeting, adjourn, and finish the recess after our regular meeting. Or come back into, uh.
It's a pleasure of the council.
Yes, that's what we do.
Or we, or we can go on.
We never seem to plan these things.
Let me ask the attorney, uh, how much, uh, time are we going to need in closed session that we might allow the, the three different departments to at least finish their, their presentation?
Uh, council member, we have two items for closed session. We anticipated thirty minutes total for both of those.
Can we move closed session to the end of the?
Those absolutely can be taken at the end. One of the items, I will say, was put on at the request of the mayor, so I don't know if we're going to want to proceed with that item tonight or wait until she's able to do that would, would leave us with one labor negotiation at, at the end.
My desire is to proceed with that item. I don't know about the rest of the council.
Okay. There's no reason we can't put closed session at the end?
Yeah, we can do that.
So, I'd make a motion, we put the closed session at the end.
A second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott and a second by Councilmember Trujillo.
Two.
Objection.
Close session, close session at the end. Close session at the end.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. I'll try to make this quick. It'll be kind of a two-part. I'll present a couple of the positions, and then Tanya will come up and, and finish out the presentation. What the maintenance and facilities department is requesting is basically a reformation of public works. Uh, I'll give you a real quick background. Back in twenty twenty-one, uh, the public works department was bifurcated into engineering services, which was a division assigned to community development, and then the maintenance and facilities department was formed. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, the city manager at that time made a standalone engineering services department with an engineering services director. That position was filled up until March of twenty twenty-three, and at that time, I assumed, uh, oversight of both the land development and CIP side of engineering during the vacancy. And in August of twenty twenty-three, the land development, uh, side of engineering went over to community development, which was similar to, to prior structures here in the city. So, what is being proposed to city council at this workshop is two public work supervisors and one city engineer. So, the maintenance and facilities department has forty-two employees. I know vacancies were mentioned earlier. I have four vacancies in my department right now. It's usually a, a pretty low list on vacancies. Also, recruitments, I've noticed that about a year ago, there were maybe ten, ten applicants coming in on average, and now I'm receiving close thirty to sixty. So, recruitments are pretty strong. But with that, of those forty-two employees, uh, within the maintenance and facilities department, there are no supervisors. The first-line supervisor is my deputy director. My deputy director oversees thirty-eight employees. So, he handles all of the, uh, personnel concerns, all of the evaluations, all of the oversight, first-line customer, customer phone calls. He's out in the field a lot, and, uh, he doesn't quite have the time to, uh, the, the span of control over the operations to where he can come in and develop training plans, customer service plans, and so forth. So, because of that gap and that, that large span of control that I talked about, I'm proposing to, uh, absorb the engineering CIP side of, of engineering. The land development would stay over in community development and, uh, add two public work supervisors. One supervisor would be over facilities and fleet services. The other one would be streets, uh, the streets division, traffic safety division, and also what I call our landscape services division. So, um, those are the two public work supervisors positions, and then the city engineer. Right now, our city uses a contract staff member that's in the office about two days a week. The city engineer requirement is written into the engineering services director position. So, the city has been without a onsite or staff city engineer since March of twenty twenty-three. So, by having one here at the city, plans reviews will, will become a lot quicker, we'll be able to turn that around, especially on, and it'll be a, a shared position. It'll also oversee, uh, or coordinate with land development as well. But, um, uh, they'd help with a lot of the oversight of all of the engineering projects, the interface day-to-day with different public, uh, questions, and also development questions. So, that's just kind of a quick, brief overview of what I'm asking, and I think, Tanya, if I could turn it over to you, because part of the, part of the request to reform public works involves a reclass of my position, and Tanya's going to take that for me.
Yeah, so, good evening, um, council. So, included with this proposal and the recommendation to consolidate public works is the, um, the recommendation to reclassify the maintenance and facilities director position into a public works director position. So, you can see that we're proposing to eliminate the engineering services director and then consolidate it into essentially just one director that would oversee, um, all of public works as we bring it back together to enhance the delivery of customer service for, for the community. Um, we wanted to, um, to, to, yeah, I wanted to give, um, Tim the chance to talk about the consolidation, the, the plan for the department, but then, um, we wanted to make sure that we, um, didn't necessarily require him to talk about the reclassification of his own position. So, and that was the suggestion. Then, um, one also potential option that we talked about with this, you know, I know that we're talking about conservative, um, revenue projections tonight and also the potential, um, costs that we're looking at for personnel requests. Uh, one potential, um, alternative that we've discussed with the interim city manager and with Tim as well as, uh, the potential to consider just one, one public work supervisor instead of two, so that would eliminate some of the costs with this proposal if, if that was an option that the city council would consider. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, any questions?
No, I just have a comment. We appreciate a lot of the work that, uh, your department has been doing in not only the potholes and paving the, uh, the streets too as well. I've heard a lot of comments from people in the community that they like the fact that we're now paving some of these streets that needed to be paved and the potholes that need to be fixed too as well. This way, we don't get as many complaints to the police department on someone injuring their, their car. But, uh, thank you very much for the work.
And the speeding tickets have increased now because people aren't. All right, thank you. Parks and Recs. Parks Recreation. Yep, there she is.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. The department is requesting the addition of a deputy director position and the reclassification of two positions: upgrading the recreation supervisor to a recreation manager and converting two part-time daycare site supervisor positions into one full-time position, which was also a, caught up in, uh, mid-year. Over the last, uh, two and a half years, the department's responsibilities have expanded, adding several significant divisions and programs, including CDBG, Rialto Cares, Parks Maintenance Cemetery Administration, Rialto e-bikes program, and shortly, we'll be creating the anticipated start of our senior and special needs transportation program. In the near future, our Parks Maintenance Division will also be assuming responsibility for the expanded PE Trail and the Rialto Habitat Project. Reclassifying the two part-time daycare site supervisors into one full-time position will allow us to employ someone with the necessary child development expertise. This will enable us to reestablish daycare licensure, expand our tiny tots program. This will enable us to reestablish daycare licensure, expand our Tiny Tots program, update our curriculum, and ensure that staff remains trained and informed about current laws and trends. Additionally, this position will help grow our summer camp program by developing a volunteer initiative. This initiative will teach our local teens valuable job and leadership skills, fulfill their school volunteer hour requirements, and expand the program to a full day instead of a half day. Reclassifying the recreation supervisor position to a rec manager will also allow us to attract top recreation professionals to oversee multiple divisions within the department. This reclassification will ensure that we have a well-rounded staff capable of leading and supporting the team, benefiting our community through creativity and hard work. Previously, the supervisor position provided direct oversight to 12 large-scale programs within the department, leaving them spread thin and the team with voids when it came to support guidance and leadership. The manager would require, would have a higher skill set and would have the capacity to provide the necessary support while still being able to develop staff, bring new program experiences to our communities such as increasing your programming or inclusive programmings for our special needs community. The addition of the deputy director will enhance our overall department's service, helping us increase the customer service both internally and externally, increase and improve responsiveness and efficiency. The position will help increase the outreach and engagement with our residents, strengthening our community presence. They will, that position will help develop and execute the community's initiatives, like expanding our senior services, which I just mentioned. They will help provide management and the completion of complex department and park projects for the community's benefit, create an implementation of a maintenance management plan, standardizing our daily, weekly, and monthly maintenance needs in our city, keeping our parks up to standard or above standard for our community to enjoy, and establish a much-needed succession plan, avoiding any interruption to services within the department. The proposed staffing levels will continue to elevate the department, keeping us aligned with city council's vision of making Rialto one of the most desirable places to live and play.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
You're still, the intent is for you to still have park maintenance under you, correct?
Correct.
So I know you and I talked about the fact that when they moved the park maintenance folks over to you, they didn't move any administrative individuals over.
Correct.
But I don't see a request for any administrative person. Why?
Because a general, basic-level administrative position really isn't going to relieve much of the pressure that we have there. The deputy director will be able to provide that specific division direct oversight, really alleviating some of the challenges that we experience.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
I just wanted to first thank you for the work that you're doing in our community. Every time we see you on social media, you're always setting up a movie in the park or something. But my question is about special events. If we were to kind of reprioritize and reimagine the events that we have and kind of, you know, make changes, would that impact any of the requests that you're making here today? So no, so any changes to events would not impact anything here?
I mean, the addition of any large-scale events without eliminating anything would impact. But these positions that I'm requesting is really just to continue to expand the services so the community can just benefit overall. At the end of the day, I think my department leads maybe seven to 10 large-scale events, and then the rest, we kind of support the rest of the departments that lead those specific events. So that kind of workload is very different than us actually leading it.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment along the same lines. Cynthia, we really appreciate the work that you've been doing, and I know that parks, recreation, and community service is very critical to our city and to our citizens who utilize our facilities. I'd also like to see, you know, look at somewhere in the budget that we might be able to put in additional parks or recreation too as well. We may need, it needs to be included somewhere along the budget as we look to expand in terms of our city. And I still would like to see, and I know that I have said this since day one, Wi-Fi's at each one of our parks. I think it's important to our community that they have the ability to go to a park and use a Wi-Fi, looking at grants or looking at other possibilities. Hopefully, we don't lose sight of that because I think that's critical to us. And then in terms of parks, recreation, I think we have one of the best parks and recreational facilities that are there. But I'd also like to see in part of the budget, an amphitheater, that we can provide concerts and activities in terms of the future too as well that should be incorporated in terms of the budget and the cost in terms of the future. And that's something that you might want to look at, Mark, in terms of what we may need in terms of what needs to be done and included in the budget. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said and just to let you know that the past few years, all of our events and all of our community engagement has increased dramatically, and the community is really grateful for that, and I'm really grateful for that as well. So keep up the good work. Our community deserves to have great events, and we'll continue to support you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, right, the police department.
Thanks, Tom, for the warm introduction. I got to pass.
Why didn't you just bring the check up here for us to sign?
I do, I do have a big check, sir. Mayor Protam and council, actually, first of all, thank you so much, Councilmember Scott, for remembering last year where the assistant city manager completely forgot. So I do want to thank you and the rest of the council for that. I only have two positions that I'm asking for this year because I don't think there's a need to go back into the other three. So those positions are a, those positions are a crime analyst and a lead records position. So let me explain those quickly. The crime analyst is just an addition of what we talked about over the last three budgets in anticipation of the new police facility with the real-time crime center. And it's just an ongoing building block, and it will also expand our hours of operations to provide our infield personnel along with detectives with critical information of solving crimes a lot quicker than the old way of waiting until the detectives or officers got back from their days off. That second position is another leads records position. I also want just to inform council about AB 953. AB 953 is a requirement by the state of California that every police officer, including detectives, that make a stop on a tree, on a vehicle or a pedestrian has to fill out what's called the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, which is called RIPA. And 953 provides the department a recovery cost, so this position would be completely funded by the state of California, and that's not anticipated to go away anytime soon. Those are the only two that I'm asking for this year, and I could answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, chief, in light of the weekend event where the city manager's car got stolen.
Yes, sir.
Not your car, luckily. We can't seem to get our act together on putting a camera system and security in our city. And we've been working on this for 10 years that I know of, at least 10 years. We still can't get it done. So it seems to me like it's in the wrong department. And I'm asking that, that any of these people that you're proposing along with your new police station, would there be the ability for you to, number one, immediately get somebody involved in the security of our facilities and get some cameras up that connect into your fuchsia system or whatever it is? And secondly, would, after the new station is up and running, would you have the ability with these, some of these staff and maybe a few more, to be able to monitor these cameras that we have at the wastewater plant, our water facilities, and city hall, and the rest of the facilities in the city so that maybe we can deal with some of the criminal element that decides to break into our buildings and steal our cars?
Great question. Short answer, absolutely. You're adding these crime analysts that are actually be in our real-time crime center. So the idea is to build the infrastructure with all the camera systems and all our facilities, and then it'd be monitored by the police department, not some off-site security company. That's what you've all been building towards. So when this building goes live in 2026, just to caution council, next year I'll be coming back for two more analysts, and that'll get us to where we're supposed to be. We'll take over monitoring. We'll actually work with Public Works and get the systems up and running with consultants that will build the system in addition to what type of camera systems would be installed in the state-of-the-art police facility. That's what you've asked for. It's what the mayor's asked for. It's what the rest of the council has asked for.
I'm going to ask that we bring back to the next EDC meeting the discussion on security on our facilities, find out exactly where we're at with the wastewater plant, the water facilities. Those cameras frankly should have already been up, but they're not. And get an update on that, and then figure, have a discussion about what we need to do with the rest of the facilities. Our employees shouldn't be working in these buildings without any cameras to help protect what's going on on the outside of these buildings, and we just got to get something done here.
Agreed.
Sooner than later.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, chief. Thank you very much. I know we gave you a lot of information today. Is there any further questions that the council has of staff, any more clarifications on any of the budget information?
Any questions? What's, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Trujillo, second by Councilmember Scott. Any opposition? Hearing none. We are in closed session.
We are not in closed session.
Well, we're in.
You just have a break before you go into the record session at 6:30. Yeah, you went to closed session after.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd be in recess for, till 6:30.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, you're in recess. [inaudible]
Extraordinary things along with teaching and helping our kids here in the community. So, I want to give him the opportunity to, because his story is extraordinary, and I want to give him the opportunity to share his journey, his journey of success, and his journey of being a Latino leader here in this community. And I want to give him an opportunity to share that.
Okay, thank you. Wow, thank you. First and foremost, thank you so much. I got a little speech, hopefully it's not too long, I'm bound to, or known to talk a little bit longer. Good evening, esteemed guests, fellow council. I first like to express my deepest gratitude to Mayor Robertson, Councilman Ed Scott, Councilman Rafael Trujillo, Councilman Joe Baca, and Councilman Andy Carizales for this incredible recognition. This moment is a tremendous honor for me, and I am profoundly humbled by this acknowledgement. I would also like to extend my heartfelt thanks to my family, friends, and Instagram followers for the unwavering support. Next, a little background about myself. I was born in San Juan Trujano, a small village in the state of Oaxaca, Mexico, to the Vargas family of Francisco and Adela Vargas. Growing up in the south side of San Bernardino in a single-parent household presented its own challenges. But my family's unwavering love, sacrifice, and belief in my potential had been my greatest pillars of strength. I would like to say to my mom who was in the area, Olga Vargas, and my brother Jesse. Woo, man. My mom, a single-parent mom. You did it right, mom, when everybody told you that you couldn't raise two boys because you're a woman, in our cultura with the machista culture, and you were able to prove everybody wrong with your two sons, who are doing great because of you, mom, because of you. Thank you. I needed to say that, I'm so sorry. We'll continue with this. However, these experiences shaped me into the person I am today. Despite these obstacles, I persevere and now hold three college degrees. Bachelor's of Arts, Liberal Studies, 2002, Master's in Education, 2004, and on that year, I was also awarded Outstanding Graduate Student for the College of Education, which means I was the valedictorian of my college. Yeah, that's pretty cool. On that same year, I was awarded Outstanding Student Leader of the Year for the University of Cali San Bernardino. I was the second Hispanic winning that award. That year was an amazing year of 2004. And then I got my second master's degree in Education Administration in 2006. That cohort of 2006 at Cali San Bernardino has been doing great things in our community. I was probably one of the best administrative cohorts of Cali San Bernardino. And I also hold three credentials, a B-Clad, a Clad, and an Administrative credential. And I'm praying, praying, que Dios quiere, for one more college degree for next year. And I know with me today is I have Dr., I'm just getting a little, getting emotional, Dr. Trujillo who's here with me today. And we're both in the same cohort. And next year, if everything works out, May 17, 2025, I'll be getting my doctorate degree in Educational Leadership. So, one more. One more degree. In February of this year, I was deeply honored to receive the first-ever prestigious Hall of Fame Award from the West Watson and Rodriguez College of Education at California State University of San Bernardino. This recognition was a significant milestone in my journey, reflecting the dedication and passion I have for education. A true statement that a college education can change your life, can change your outcome, can make you have the life that you never thought you'd have. Also thinking that you live in an imposter, this imposter syndrome era. Recently, I experienced a unique moment of viral fame when a video of me warming up as a wrestling referee during the CIF Boys Individual Championship Division I gained widespread attention. I was just doing my thing and somebody recorded it and it went viral. With over 35,146 likes and more than 500 positive comments about me as a wrestling official. Coolest thing being called the greatest official in high school wrestling in the state of California, the greatest of all time, the guy that will make sure that your wrestler does not get hurt. That to me is the most amazing, knowing that the wrestlers know that they're not going to get hurt on my mat. I've been a high school wrestling official for the past 26 years. I represented the Illand Empire Wrestling Association, and I also belong to the foothill of association. So, I'm very prestige to have the prestigious tournaments as Wrestling Division I Finals, Individuals Wrestling Division I Team Finals, Masters Wrestling Championships. And in the future, if God permits, I'm hoping to do the state finals of high school wrestling. But that'll be so cool when they can announce me as Dr. Juan Carlos Luna as one of their wrestling officials. That's like one of my, one of my goals, to be announced on that, that'll be pretty cool. To my CSUSB doctoral candidates of Cohort 16, you have been such a blessing to me. Thank you for being in my life. You have no idea what your friendship means to me. I almost called it quits a couple of times, but because of you guys and my family, we said we can continue with this program. One year to go, let's go. Currently, I'm entering my final year as a doctoral candidate with the goal of graduating with a doctorate degree in Educational Leadership on May 17, 2025. This journey has been both challenging and rewarding, and I'm eager to contribute further to the field of education with the knowledge and skills I have acquired with the ultimate goal of becoming a K-12 Superintendent of School somewhere in California. Additionally, I'm proud to be entering my 21st year as an elementary teacher. Over the years, I've been the privilege of shaping young minds and witnessing the incredible potential with each student. Teaching has been more than a career for me. It has been calling and a source of immense fulfillment. Seeing former students here with me today and seeing future students with me today, I can assure you, I will continue to work hard for our students. They are the future. They deserve the best when it comes to education. To my colleagues at Hugh Banks Elementary, these 10 years of knowing you have been the most, most best professional experience of my life. I truly admire what you have done for our students in the city of Rialto. The city, to the city of Rialto, I love the city of Rialto, and I love my school district, Rialto Unified School District. I also want to express my gratitude to the dedicated professors such as my padrino, Dr. Enrique Murillo, Dr. Nena Torres, and Patricia Aguilera. And you have played a pivotal role in my shaping as my academic professional growth. Your mentorship, guidance, and commitment to education have been instrumental in my success. I'm truly grateful for the knowledge and wisdom you have in pair, which has empowered me to excel both inside and outside the classroom. To my beautiful wife Patty and my two daughters Alexa and Eileen, thank you for your continued support and inspiration. Thank you for allowing me to do what I do. Thank you for the numerous hours of me not being home and blessing other athletes and doing what I do. Thank you for allowing me to DJ on the weekends. Thank you for allowing me to go to Disneyland when I need to go to Disneyland. To my brother Olga and my brother Jesse, thank you for always being by my side, no matter the obstacles. Your unwavering support has been foundation. To my brother Jesse, you are a true inspiration, and I admire what you do. You make me better every day. I love you, Jesse. I'm going to conclude this. Thank you, thank you to all from the bottom of my heart. This recognition is not just my victory, it is the testament of the power of faith, family, friends, and education. Together, we have shown that with determination and strong support, system, anything is possible. May we continue to inspire and uplift each other in our respective journeys. In conclusion, I stand here today as a testament to the power of perseverance, community, and education. I'm deeply grateful for this honor and for the opportunity to serve and inspire others. Thank you all once again for this incredible recognition. Super motivated for the summer of 2025. Excited about changing my title from Mr. Luna MA to Dr. Juan Carlos Luna Vargas. In the words of Dolores Huerta, si se puede y que viva, the city of Rialto and Rialto Unified School District. Thank you so much.
I, I just want to add to that. You see all the parents and other kids that are out here. I mean, that, it just tells you how much impact she's had, he's had in our, our parents and our education. I mean, it even brought my very own Audrey and Andrew, who are actually ex-students of him. So, it's, it's just a great, a great opportunity to recognize a leader in this community. And I will read this off. It's a certificate of recognition presented to Juan Carlos Luna Alumni Hall of Fame. For your recognition in leadership, your service in education sector, your outstanding achievements, and receiving the Paw Prince Award, the city of Rialto is very proud of the goals that you have pursued and the lives that you have touched. And it's signed by our mayor, Councilmember Trujillo, Councilmember Scott, Councilmember Baca, and myself. Wow. Congratulations. All right, thank you, Mr. Luna. And that brings us to our next presentation. Summer readings in the library. Summer readings in the library, is that? Doesn't say. Librarian Janet Marosa. Please join us at the podium. Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, but thank you guys for having me. Hi, everyone. So, good evening, council, and thank you for having us. This is Leslie Tepe, she's my regional manager. And I'm Janet Montarosa, the branch manager here at the Rialto Library. We are part of the San Bernardino County Public Library, and we're here to talk about our summer reading program, Gear Up and Read. This program is being held from June 1st to July 27th. Each year, we present an educational and entertaining program where children and families are encouraged to read for rewards. In doing this, the children will retain their reading skills acquired during the school year, helping prevent that summer slide, and be more prepared to start school in the fall. When adults participate in our summer reading program, they help model reading as a pleasurable activity and help build good reading habits. In addition, the program emphasizes the library's place in the community, a place where children and their families can enjoy themselves and gain a lifelong love of reading and learning. We use an online system called Beanstack where all participants will log their reading, and this is, this account is how the library helps redeem all the rewards that are earned. As this is a free program, we have taken the liberty to create an account for the city of Rialto council members, so thank you guys for letting us do that, on our Beanstack website. In doing so, all of you will be receiving one of our signup tote bags. I'll give those to you in just a moment, so thank you guys for having those. And inside, those are our summer calendar of events and the how-to guide on logging into Beanstack. Now that you are all signed up, you guys can start tomorrow by checking out books and redeeming all your prizes. And then, all it takes is one book a week for all the adults to get their prizes, including chocolates, notebooks, all kinds of fun stuff. For our children and teen programs, we offer a few options such as reading by number of pages, or by minutes, or by number of books. And furthermore, now that we are all signed up and know how to log our books, you can come into the library at any time during the summer to redeem the prizes for all eight weeks, again, starting as soon as tomorrow. You can also earn a ticket for every 30 books you check out, which will enter you into the countywide drawing for a grand prize. This is good for anyone at any age. And then, we hope you can help us encourage the rest of the city of Rialto to come sign up, as well as everyone here tonight. And please tell all your families and friends about the summer reading program right next door here at the Rialto Branch Library. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, if I can walk over, I can. I, I remember. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to oral communications. Is there anyone that would like to speak on oral communication? Okay, we do have two speakers and will Veronica Perez come to the podium?
Hello. I find it very hypocritical to start off these city council meetings with a prayer where you ask for God's guidance and strength as leaders while you choose to be silent during a genocide funded by our tax dollars. Why are you silent as children continue to die the most horrendous deaths imaginable? How do you go on about your day while the weapons and bombs we send to the Israeli military blow children to pieces? How are you able to ignore the immense suffering of innocent families who are living through hell and who are helpless to stop the slaughter? I will not accept the convenient lie that there is nothing we can do to change it. I reject your silence while you all sit here every meeting and listen to me and still refuse to act. Passing a ceasefire resolution is the very least we can do. The children in the city of Rialto are the same as the children of Palestine, and your inability to see them as worthy of life says a lot about who you are and what you stand for. I want to support leaders who put people, people over power and profit, leaders who are not afraid to speak out against injustices, leaders who will not stand by while evil persists, but who will stand against it and who will stand for righteousness. Leaders like Major Harrison Mann, an active-duty US Army intelligence officer who recently resigned from the military in protest over US support for the government of Israel, whose policy has, I quote him, "enabled and empowered the killing and starvation of tens of thousands of innocent Palestinians," end his quote. In his own words, Major Mann presents the equation clearly. At some point, quote, "At some point, it became difficult to defend the outcomes of this particular policy." At some point, whatever the justification, you're either advancing a policy that enables the mass starvation of children, or you're not," end quote. I have seen Malnour's children gasping for their last breath, children dying alone, children who resemble skeletons lying in agony, waiting for the world to wake up. The World Food Program led by Cindy McCain reports hunger is worsening because of heavy restrictions on humanitarian access. According to their most recent report, if the situation does not change drastically, more than 1 million people, nearly half of Gaza's population, will be in a full-blown famine by mid-July. Everyone here is part of the current equation. You can decide to continue a genocide or help stop it. And if you don't see Palestinian life as worthy of your time, attention, or energy, then I'm not sure how I can trust you to care about me and my family as fellow community members. We are all the same, and we all deserve leaders who stand for what is right. A permanent and immediate ceasefire is the only way forward. A temporary ceasefire resulted in the release of over 100 hostages last year. Many families of the hostages are pleading for a ceasefire so they can be reunited with their loved ones. I'll leave you with the words of Maio Zinon, son of Bilha and Yakov Yenon, who were both killed by Hamas on October 7th. We must start a new phase, a new phase in humanity that we are not, that we are not solving conflicts through war, through bloodshed, through revenge. It is the equation of the devil. Four Israeli hostages equal to 207 Palestinian casualties. We are all human. No human, no Israeli, no Palestinian, not my parents, no one on planet Earth deserves to be part of this equation. No one. And we must implement a new equation, an equation of life, that is his quote. So, I pray that you all find the strength and guidance to meet with me, talk with me, discuss passing a permanent ceasefire resolution, and stop being complicit in genocide. Thank you for your time.
Second speaker we have is Marco Antonio.
Buenos tardes. So, Marco Antonio Villalobos, President of Rialto Villanegras. Estoy aquí otra vez para mi petición. Este, creo que ya me, me sacaron de, de ya de la ciudad porque ya no aparezco en el magazine de la ciudad de Rialto.
So, Marco Antonio is here again as a representative of his league. He is saying that his petition is regarding him being taken out of the league.
Fue una junta de los deportes de la zona pasada y no fui invitado.
There was a meeting about reports regarding the league and he was not invited.
Ahorita estoy castigado porque hubo un incidente en el día 6 de diciembre que lo está manejando diferente a lo que pasó. Y quiero también ser hincapié que el día 12 de noviembre, la otra liga tuvo un incidente peor que el mío y no, no ha sido castigada. O sea, no está midiendo la misma, con el mismo, la misma situación.
On the 6th of December, there was an incident with his league that he wishes was handled differently. And he references another event in November with another league that he says was not punished the same way. He feels that the treatment is unfair.
Un, este, un adulto fue registrado como juvenil y ese adulto, este, estuvo involucrado en, en, en golpear a dos menores de edad. Una niña, así, un niño de cinco años y otro menor de edad. Hubo reporte de la policía, hubo cargos, y, y no pasó nada. No sé qué por qué, conmigo sí pasó algo y ellos no.
He references a report where there was a adult registered as a minor who got an altercation with another minor, a five-year-old. He says there was a police report and charges, and he says again that it was not treated the same way as his incident.
También están, ya están diciendo que están agarrando mi, mi, mi pedacito de que me dan del, del, la J-Hispar, solamente una, un pedacito para mi nido de Rialto. Yo sé que, eh, mi único error que yo no que haya pasado eso es de que no hice reporte de, de la ciudad, pero creo que ellos tampoco lo hicieron y, y no pasó nada.
So, he's saying that his involvement in this is that he didn't make a report with the city. He says that also no one advised him about this.
El propio agente de ahí de la, de esa liga nos, este, me están molesto porque están diciendo que no, que no están juzgándolo igual.
So, an agent of the league is saying that he is also being treated unfairly.
Este, también, este, hace como dos años, ellos trabajaron un año, un año sin, sin la nonprofit corporación por, por no sé qué pasó, y no fueron castigados ni suspendidos su permiso.
Two years ago, a nonprofit was also not suspended or received the same conditions that he did.
Yo también por, este, por no ser un pago de, un fee de la corporación, eh, me suspendieron, eh, la, la corporación, y inmediatamente a mí, me sacaron, me quitaron el permiso.
So, for not paying a corporation fee, he was suspended and taken out of the league.
También un concejal que estaba aquí antes fue, fue, fue agredido, empujado, maltratado, hice reporte a la ciudad, y nunca pasó nada. Un concejal que estaba aquí, creo que es Palmer, me, me, me empujó, me, me maltrató. Y la verdad, porque la gente mía la tengo muy controlada, si no hubiera pasado alguna desgracia.
Another person who came, pushed him and treated him poorly was also not reported.
También hice reporte a la policía, y también les pregunté qué pasó, y nunca, dos años y no me han dado respuesta. Qué fue lo que pasó en la investigación.
Two years ago, he made a police report and did not receive a response regarding what had happened in the incident.
También, este, hay gente que se ha venido a quejar de esa liga, y no ha hecho nada, y, y a mí nomás vinieron a quejar de dos personas que ya no están ni siquiera aquí, y, y a mí sí, a mí sí me, me suspendieron.
The people have complained about this other league that he references and says that nothing has happened, whereas the two people in his incident are no longer part of his league, and he is still suspended.
I, I just want to interfere. So, we have a scheduled meeting with him already. So, tenemos una junta, este, agendada para usted, para que nos dé todos esos detalles, traiga todos los, los detalles que tenga para poder hallar una buena resolución.
Pues ojalá mayor que sí tenga una resolución porque, como le voy a repetir, ya, pues la gente habla, ya está viendo que yo estoy fuera de, del, del permiso, lo cual lo ve injusto, pero en fin. Ojalá que, bueno, pues mejor termino, ¿verdad? Mañana nos vemos.
Sí, este, por favor, traga todos los documentos y todos sus datos para poder, este, ver qué, cómo lo podemos ayudar. So, I'm just asking that he bring all his documentation and all the information that he has so that we can find a resolution for him. I know he's been to the council a few times, and his, 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 we will resolve this for him, and we do have a scheduled date for him.
Bueno, espero buenas noticias porque, más por último, yo tengo como unos más o menos 600 niños que están en mi liga. No, nosotros no jugamos en J-Hispar, solamente pido para entrenar en el J-Hispar. Mi liga, como liga la, la junta pasada, está en, en la J-Hispar School. Ahí tenemos como 40 juegos de papás, mamás, y niños, y no hay, no, los invito, como siempre, no hay violencia. Fue un error que pasó y no volverá a pasar. Muchas gracias.
He says it's a mistake, will not happen again. He has 40 games at J-Hispar Middle School, whereas he would like to practice that.
Gracias.
Buen día.
Buen día.
All right, any other oral communications? All right, that brings us to the consent calendar. Any members would like to abstain from any items or would like to pull any items for discussion?
I'll have number F1. I want to pull and just quickly talk about the selected projects.
Okay, so we have F1.
Just pulling to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay. But not to take it off the consent calendar?
No.
Okay.
Questions?
Anything else?
No, keep it short.
Okay, Councilman Trujillo?
I was looking at the list of streets, and I noticed, you know, there were some on the north side, some in like the downtown area. And I'm, I'm assuming it's through a point system that you selected them, correct?
Correct. So, the, the list of streets that were provided to the attached resolution were streets that were selected in prior council actions. This is as a result of the pavement ratings.
And I know, I noticed that some of them are listed a little different in segments. For example, like I saw Bonner, it went from like, like Cedar to Yala, Yala to, you know, whatever the other street is. But it wasn't one segment, it was divided into two segments. Is there a reason why there's, it's just not one whole piece?
That is correct. They were just provided for the SB1 because we have limited, I guess, characters on our portal. So, we just completed it, or we designated the streets in segments, which has facilitated their review.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I had a lot of technical questions about the
Okay.
Move the consent item. I'll second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Baca, a second by Councilman Trujillo. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. That brings us to tab one is new business.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Protem, and members of council. Good evening. I'm Tim Sullivan, the Director of Maintenance and Facilities. For your consideration tonight is the adoption of Resolution Number 8243 establishing the municipal solid waste collection recycling, organics, and disposal rates for fiscal year 2425. On June 27th of last year, the city council conducted a public hearing in accordance with Proposition 218. Proceeds and, I'm sorry, the Proposition 218 proceeds and adopted Resolution 8109 approving the adoption of waste collection service rates for four years. That's fiscal year 2324 through 2627. And Gabe, you can drop the presentation for right now. When Michael comes up, we can turn it on. So, thank you. The rates that are being proposed tonight are lower than those that were forecasted in the Prop 218 notice. This year's proposed rate adjustment was presented to the Solid Waste Subcommittee in April and to the Utilities Commission in May. The Utilities Commission reviewed the proposed rate adjustment and recommended that the city council approve the rates as proposed. Before Michael Heffman from Burt Tech provides you with a PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight a few of the city's recent accomplishments and the council's direct actions that have contributed to minimizing impacts to the Rialto residents and businesses. In some incidents, instances, sorry there, the rates have been reduced across the board in, in certain cities. In some incidents, instances, sorry there, the rates have been reduced across the board in certain situations. So in 2022, the state forced unfunded SB thirteen-eighty-three mandates on California waste generators to achieve organic waste diversion goals or face financial penalties. As a result of failing to meet these stringent requirements, the city was placed on a corrective action plan or a cap. That was in March of 2023. I'm pleased to report that with the support of council, staff concluded the final progress meeting with CalRecycle in March of this year and has now been placed on the list of cities ready for cap closeout. The cap included seventy-five various tasks with established deadlines. The city met or exceeded all of these deadlines. And the result that if we failed to comply to these deadlines, the city faced potential fines up to ten thousand dollars per day. So, another item was the participation in the comprehensive disposal site diversion plan, which is the CDSDP with the county landfill system, which impacted commercial businesses. So withdrawal from the CDSDP program resulted in the savings of twelve dollars per ton for roll-off customers, potentially reducing roll-off rates by a hundred and twenty dollars per load. So depending on the weight of these refuse loads being delivered at the landfill. In addition, council entered into a non-financial MOU with the County Department of Public Health to partner on food recovery efforts that met the requirements of SB thirteen-eighty-three. This MOU relieves the city of significant financial burden by placing food recovery program elements such as education and outreach, compliance monitoring, record keeping and enforcement activities on the county. Further, the city council adopted an amendment to the San Bernardino, I'm sorry, San Bernardino County Waste Disposal Agreement, which is different than the CDSDP. This agreement established a cap such that the city's disposal rate at the gate does not exceed eighty-five percent at the county landfills. This eliminated the possibility of the city paying higher disposal fees than non-WDA members, which in return is a stabilized cost savings to Rialto customers. Finally, the rate adjustments for fiscal years twenty-three through twenty-seven included a twenty percent reduction in the city's household hazardous waste fee from forty-nine cents to thirty-eight cents and a reduction of the AB nine thirty-nine fee from forty-eight, or sorry, from forty-nine cents to thirty-nine cents. So I appreciate all of council's support in seeking out these financial opportunities for us to reduce the rates on our customers. And with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Michael Heffman, who will give you a presentation on rates specific to this fiscal year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, and good evening Mayor Protem, members of the council, city staff and audience members here this evening. My name is Michael Heffman with Burt Tech Waste Industries and I'm here this evening with my associate, Mr. Richard Nino. So tonight, we're going to take a look at the presentation on the 2024 solid waste rate adjustment. Just a reminder on state mandated compliance requirements. Assembly Bill three forty-one requires that certain businesses and multifamily dwellings recycle, which would be the blue barrel. Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six then passed, which required businesses and multifamily to recycle organics if they had more than two cubic yards or more or were more than five dwelling units in a multifamily environment. Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, as Tim had mentioned, just passed, which expanded recycling and organics programs mandates procurement requirements and it also took the organics programs out to residential customers and low-volume commercial generators. And as part of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, enforcement sections began in January one of 2024. Now, as part of thirteen eighty-three, education and outreach is an important component. It's really important to get the message out to the residents and the commercial and multifamily business owners and property managers to ensure that they're able to participate in the programs correctly. Some examples we've listed here are up on the left is the magnet that we sent out to all residential residents that highlights some of the items of what goes where. And on the right is our what goes where guide that gives a little bit more detail on which items fit in which container. Now, the what goes where guide was also featured in the Rialto Progress Magazine. Contamination monitoring is another important aspect of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Just this past April, we were out in the community looking at what we call lid flips. And so we actually are required to go out into the field, lift the lid to check for contamination and to monitor how participation is happening. Should a resident or a generator successfully participate in the programs and not witness any contamination, a tag is left, which is checked on that very bottom box there, number six, that says great job, no contamination, and they are entered into a drawing. If there is contamination found, the generator will be educated on the checkboxes and will highlight which materials were found in which container. Now, compliance goals that are still being worked on today include maintaining compliance with AB three forty-one and AB eighteen twenty-six, maintaining and continuing to implement thirteen eighty-three to meet the state required mandates and expand the use of compost and mulch at city facilities and with local partners here within the community. Now, some of the achievements, to just further highlight what Tim had mentioned earlier, include compliance with education and outreach activities, residential program implementation along with the commercial and multifamily programs that were rolled out to the low-volume generators, 2023 procurement compliance, and we're well on our way for 2024 this year, the container contamination minimization requirements and compliance, as was mentioned in the previous slide, container labeling and waiver validations that you'll see out in the community. A lot of our previously painted white recycle bins are now becoming blue per the regulation. And just most recently edible food recovery capacity requirements that are outlined in thirteen eighty-three determine that the city here of Rialto is compliant with its capacity and sufficient for now. Now, moving on to the 2024 rate adjustment impacts. The rate adjustments are first and foremost with service, which is based on the Consumer Price Index, which for this rate adjustment period was three-point-four-eight percent. There are disposal and processing cost components and there are thirteen eighty-three program impacts. There were no changes to the costs on the thirteen eighty-three program impact in the rate adjustment before you. A little bit of the recent rate adjustment history. In 2020, the rate adjustment was deferred to 2021. And then in 2021, that deferred rate adjustment was further revised to spread residential deferral over two years. In 2022, there was no adjustments made. And then in 2023, last year, the rate adjustments also included the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three programs. As disposal and processing costs are current, listed here are the current and new costs for refuse disposal and organic waste and recycle materials processing. As you can see, there's no change to the trash cost component. That's based on the Waste Disposal Agreement. Slight change with organics there on your screen. And then a significantly larger change to recyclables. And what we've noticed with recyclables, if you can imagine back during the pandemic, the stay-at-home orders caused a lot of Amazon orders and a lot of deliveries. We actually saw an uptick in some of the recyclable materials that we were collecting. And further beyond that, we saw more bulky items being collected, mattresses, couches, things being bought possibly with stimulus. Well, since that time period, what we've seen is the demand for those goods and services has begun to decline. And with that decline in demand, the commodity values that help drive the recycling as part of the disposal and processing component for recyclables has also declined. So the commodity values are starting to reduce. We're even seeing in warehouses, mid-sized warehouses that are remaining empty. We're seeing the larger ones that are full and provide service, but some of the more mid-level ones are empty. Now, for the residential rates, the basic residential services, service costs are not changing. Twenty-twenty-three, thirty-three eighty-eight for sixty-gallon standard residential service cost. Proposed in the adjustment before you is the same rate at thirty-three eighty-eight. And as you can see, the forty-gallon service and the senior tax service remains unchanged as well. For the commercial and multifamily rates, what you're seeing on your screen here are more, some of the more common commercial service one-time-per-week services that are listed. So this is a three-yard trash bin in the first row, serviced one time per week. The change between the current and the proposed is a dollar seventy-six per month. The two-yard food waste bin that changes one-twenty. The sixty-five-gallon barrel is sixty-seven cents. And the multifamily three-yard bin serviced one time a week. And this also includes the bulky item collection program as has been there in the past, will change two dollars and fifteen cents per month. Now, the rate adjustment request is to request city council approve the municipal solid waste collection recycling organics and disposal rates for fiscal year twenty and twenty-four, for fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. And additional rates are also provided in your packets as the exhibit. And there is a changed amount, which is a new column that was added based on the Subcommittee's recommendation that shows the percentage increases and in some cases decreases on some of the balance of the rates. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Vaca? No questions? Councilmember Trujillo?
No, I was just part of the committee that went with the recommendation and I was glad that we came up with no additional fees too as well for a lot of our residents. And we defined what barrels that they had to put in, the organics too as well, along with the magnets that are put on in each one.
Move approval.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Vaca, and there's a question on the board.
Councilman?
Is there a designation between, like, I think when we first started this, I had a question about designating certain parts a state fee. Do you guys still kind of, on bills or any other kind of communication, do you draw the distinction between the state projects versus local costs?
At this time, we have not, but we are looking into that, so we can get back to.
Because you know, some of them are obviously, you know, trying to recover the costs of the actual work that's being done or the materials or the labor. But the other one is really just a state initiative. And I asked in the past to kind of make that distinction to let the public know that there are state initiatives in the bill, on their bill, that they should be aware about.
They are currently defined by commodities, trash, recycle and organics, which the organics are a lot of the new programs that are highlighted. But I will check back with you and get back with you on an answer as to.
We had this discussion in the previous council meetings, but I just, I just wanted to make sure to inform the public the differences because it's, although here we are kind of, you know, moving these fees forward on behalf of the state or other kind of initiatives, that they're not necessarily our initiatives and they're not all based on labor or materials, that they're actually other state initiatives, like state initiatives.
And we do have statement messages that are listed on the invoices. So there have been instances where it says thirteen eighty-three, the state mandated programs and requirements along with our newsletters, the name state mandated or Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is frequent in our newsletters that go out to residents as well. So it is being publicized that there are state mandated programs that we're working through. But I'll check as to the frequency on which those are happening. Thank you so much, sir.
I do remember what Councilman Trujillo brought up and I know because I'm the one that brought it up. So I would highly encourage you to make sure that that's on every statement because just to be on a banner on a one-time is probably not enough.
Yes, sir, thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to, so we, we had a, we had a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Vaca. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to tab two.
Mayor Protem and council, tab two actually requests that you approve a one-year agreement for professional services with the Social Work Action Group. Approve a purchase order in the amount of seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-nine-hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and authorize the interim city manager or his designate to execute all the documents. Real quick, you've done the right thing. Because in 2020, you decided to bring in SWAG to address the homelessness that was actually escalating in the, in the community. Over the last several years, our numbers continually to decline. And although I say that, this year there was a slight increase of three people, but the numbers of individuals that they contacted were greater than the year before. So Rialto has seventy-three, one of the lowest in the county, and that's because of your decision to bring SWAG here. And there was concern with the council about whether they worked four days a week, five days a week. And what you authorize us to do is to have them work seven days a week. There was questions from council whether SWAG worked at night. We actually have moved our hours around. There is several times that we have them working at night for nighttime clients. There was questions from council whether SWAG can communicate in Spanish. That is an assurance that they do. And their proactive approach, instead of waiting for individuals to go seek services, we go out and seek individuals and provide those services.
Move approval.
SWAG is here tonight, you can stand up because this is the group that actually has the lowest numbers in the county and I appreciate the. Yes, sir.
Chief, do you know on the, on the new app, and I'm not sure where we're at with the rollout of the, the app to report issues in the city, does anybody know? But my question is, is there a spot on that app to report situations to SWAG?
Great question, time out, let me find out. I got the public works guy here that knows what he's doing.
He's the public works guy?
Well, you know what I mean, facilities guy, trying to help you out here, buddy.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir, there is a section here for unhoused.
Oh, excellent. Did you know that, chief?
I did now, right now, sir.
I didn't know it either.
We're, we're working on an internal rollout, so we're starting an education program internally with staff on the different functions of the app.
Okay, when does it roll out to the community?
About three months. We want to make sure all the bugs are worked out and we're ninety-nine-point-nine percent there.
And will these ladies and gentlemen with SWAG have a way to get that information directly to them without having to bother the police department?
Hundred percent, we'll set that up.
Perfect, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, chief, I want to thank you for highlighting all the items that this council asked for on the last, the last time they were here, last time you were here with SWAG. And I just want to commend them for the great job that they're doing out there and for keeping our numbers down. And one of my priorities was to make sure that they had some accessibility at night, whether it was one time a month or one time a week, whatever that was. But we really needed to reach out and be in our community at nighttime because I feel like that's, that's where a lot of the, a lot of the efforts that were done by SWAG are reached through being available at night, so thanks for that.
Thank you for all your, all your support, yes, sir.
I do have a question, if you could just update the numbers for us and promote the good work that you guys are doing.
Sure, so there's two numbers in the, the publication that was released by the county this, this last month. So the numbers for Rialto are seventy-three and fifty, it's a little bit confusing. So let me break that down for you so you understand. In your staff report, I used the higher number of seventy-three. It's almost like what we did when we presented in Sacramento about our SWAG model last year. So seventy-three is the actual number of homeless that we've determined. There's fifty number, there's a number fifty in that report. That report discusses that those are the actual surveys that were counted by the point-in-time staff. So fifty are the actual numbers. The staff went out and found an additional twenty-three that did not want to participate, but we felt that they need to be included, so our numbers were accurate, seventy-three is the number.
And also, do you, do you have like the number of homeless people were able to kind of take off the streets over time since the program began?
I do. So every month, I receive a report from Aaron. And Aaron, can you come on up here? So, yeah, come on up. You all know Aaron? My apologies, I should have this number. That SWAG's actually, four-hundred-and-fifty clients is what they've served. They've connected three-hundred-and-fifty-nine homeless individuals to substance abuse treatment, three-hundred-and-two of those mental, of those subjects for mental health services and two-hundred-and-eighty-seven individuals have exited the street, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven. And of those two-hundred-and-eighty- And of those two hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and ninety-three homeless individuals received sheltered housing, and ninety-four were placed into permanent housing. So again, you know, this council's decision to actually seek out an organization that really knows what they're doing is the reason why our numbers in here in Rialto. Although they fluctuate, because I get calls from you saying, hey, there, it looks like there's kind of an influx, we turn it over to these individuals. And again, as I said, they go out and seek, they don't wait. And that's why your numbers are low.
I'd just like you comment, I'd like to compliment the Rialto Police Department in, in working with SWAG too as well. I talked to the Rialto Bible Church out here, and they, they had a homeless individual that I referred back to the police department. The police department immediately reacted, found a place for the individual, gave him a voucher, and then tried to find him a job too as well. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that recognition. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Baca and a second by Councilmember Scott. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. That brings us to- Tab three.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. Before you tonight, for your consideration of adoption, are three resolutions relating to the memorandum of understanding for the Rialto Police Benefits Association Police General Unit. The MOU attached to resolution eighty-two forty-four is a two-year term from July one, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and provide for a cost of living adjustment retroactive to July one, twenty twenty-three of six percent. And there is another COLA increase on July one, twenty twenty-four of five percent. Also included in the MOU is a one-time non-perishable bonus pay of sixteen-ten to be given to each unit member within the bargaining group, as well as an increase to the medical cash allowance to keep pace with the increasing costs of medical premiums. This amount is two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars per month. Other additional monetary items specific to this MOU include a three percent increase to the base salary for those corporals assigned to the Professional Standards Bureau.
Move approval. Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Baca, second by Councilmember Trujillo. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
Just before we do that, I'm just going to read if it's okay with the motion and the second to read the resolutions. Councilmember Baca, can you just read the resolution?
Resolution eighty-two forty-four, resolution eighty-two forty-five, resolution eighty-two forty-six, and adopt resolution eighty-two forty-four, adopt resolution eighty-two forty-five, and approve resolution eighty-two forty-six.
Well, and, and all of that was in for approving the memorandum of understanding establishing compensation and the benefits of employees represented by the Rialto Police Department Benefits Association for the General Barg, Bargain Unit, which is, that's resolution eight-two-four-four, and resolution eighty-two forty-five is for the compensation plan for the full-time and part-time employees. And resolution eighty-two forty-six is to amend the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget for the budget appropriation.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to tab four.
Any objection? None?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor Protem and members of council. Myself and Shama and Fire Marshal Jensen here are for the next item that I'm going to be presenting. So the item before you, request city council to ratify the emergency proclamation following the incident on May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at Fire Station two oh one. Approve emergency remediation of Fire Station two oh one and the, and the procurement of temporary housing needs for fire EMS operations. Rescind the emergency proclamation and delegate authority to the city manager to process all reimbursable expenses related to the fire station reconstruction. So on the evening of May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at approximately nine-thirty P M, a suspected drunk driver's vehicle collided with the west side of Fire Station two oh one, causing a significant, a significant impact. This collision led to severe structure damage, particularly to the roof, and ruptured several fire sprinklers, resulting in a flood within the station. The vehicle also caught fire as a result of the incident, further damaging the building. The city's chief building official and the fire marshal determined that the living quarters, locker rooms, kitchen area, and apparatus bays at the station were inhabitable. Immediately following this determination, fire personnel were temporarily relocated to other Rialto fire stations. Following the incident and determination, an emergency declaration was made demonstrating the city's proactive approach to maintaining fire department services essential to public health, safety, and welfare. The fire department, risk management, engineering services, maintenance and facilities, and procurement departments collaborated efficiently to secure abatement and restoration services and materials, including a temporary housing facility for the fire department personnel. City staff began actions to stabilize the roof structure by installing shoring to prevent the building from collapsing, and temporary living facility, a temporary living facility was obtained to continue public service from the fire station. The city filed a claim with the insurer and has held several meetings with the insurance adjuster. The adjuster has authorized the city to proceed with the removal, repair, and rehab of the building. Because fire operations and the immediate threat of a roof collapse have been stabilized, staff recommends that council rescind the emergency proclamation in tonight's recommendations. Moving forward with the restoration of the fire station, staff will coordinate all procurement and restoration activities with the insurance adjuster and normal non-emergency procurement protocols. So thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
Councilmember Scott?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First off, the, the building that's been placed behind the fire station, is that a commercial building?
Considered residential, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
It's a residential building.
Correct.
And if a normal business in this city decided to put a residential building on their property, would they be allowed to do that?
I don't have the answer to that, other than-
Well, the answer to that is no. You couldn't do it. So I, I'm just going to make a statement here tonight, and I know the excuse for it. But if we have rules in this city and we have codes, and they're either municipal building code, or state code, whatever they are, then we need to practice what we preach. And we should have gone to a better length to find a commercial building to put back there. So my next question is, is that building over there ADA compliant?
Yes, it is.
And that includes the ramp in the back?
Correct.
And the porches and all that?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and is everything else to code and been approved by the building department?
You've been coordinating, has the building department approved?
The building department continues to inspect, and the answer to that question is yes. They've inspected all mechanical, electrical, plumbing-
Are we occupying the building?
Yes, sir.
Without?
We received authorization to occupy-
From, from the building department?
From the building department, yes, sir.
And is that a temporary occupancy?
Yes, sir.
Isn't that, would we, would we give that same benefit to the average resident in this community?
We would based upon the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing requirement that we met. The only issue that we have right now is we're using a temporary standby generator to power while we wait for an electrical engineer to provide loading calculations from the fire station building to supply and support the-
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that we treat our residents the same way we treat our city property and staff. And we extend to them the same courtesies. It's a little unfair when people drive by there and see what's going on, and then they start questioning, and they have done that. Why we've allowed something to happen? I, I just don't think there's, it's a good look, you guys. You know, and this, this emergency declaration, you were, you should have brought this to the council at the last meeting. We don't follow policies of this city, we just kind of do what we want to do. And, but we expect our residents and our businesses to do that. So I'm just pointing this out to you tonight, that I don't think it's a good look for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Trujillo?
No, I just, on the note, though. I, I was-
Later note?
I did notice that they're putting in the sewer line and all the other kind of services, and I, I, you know, I was able to kind of, kind of poke my head in and, and talk to some, some of the firefighters that were in there. But I, I do want to say, I, I know this is a, the combinations aren't the best, but that, you know, it's something. And I just wanted to thank, thank everybody for their patience as we try to get through this, especially the, those that are being housed there to, to operate our trucks and our emergency services. So I just wanted to thank the firefighters who were there and tried to get through this, this moment. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board? Well, before I do, I just, I just a comment. First of all, I know that it's our responsibility as far as the city goes to provide safety and provide an opportunity for employees to have a place where they can actually provide that kind of service. I do agree with Councilmember Scott in terms of the process that should have been followed, and somehow we didn't quite do it that way, but we also have a responsibility for safety. And I think that was the immediate response by those individuals that were involved because we needed to make sure that there was a place for a lot of our firefighters to stay and also provide the service that they need. Because it was an accident that happened there, and the individual that, that drove their vehicle didn't have any insurance. And so that's why a lot of the damage that was done there. And then we had no recourse but to make sure that we had that residential building that was done there, but all the other requirements that were met too as well. So I want to thank you, you know, for that and the ability to continue to provide a service to our community, the fire department.
And, and on my end, you know, I, I think, when we first started, we had these firefighters and trucks at different stations. So it was, it really serves us better to, at least this gives us an opportunity to be able to help with the response times in, in that area. So I'll move, I'll move on this item.
I got a motion by Councilmember Trujillo, a second by Councilmember Baca. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. That brings us to tab five.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. Troy Asha Sabag, Assistant to the City Manager. The item before you tonight is to adopt resolution number eight-two-four-seven and Rua Resolution number zero-eight-three-five, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget. Approve the Proposition One, Round Two, Integrated Regional Water Management Implementation Grant Funding Contract between the Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority and the City of Rialto for two million one hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars for the Rialto Habitat Nature Center. And authorize the city manager slash executive director to execute all the necessary documents. Of important note, there is a correction to Section Two of the resolutions. The concession agreement wastewater revenue account number should be corrected to five six six zero seven eight six zero four seven five three six. On November fourth, twenty fourteen, California voters approve Proposition One, the Water Quality Supply and Infrastructure Improvement Act. This act authorized five hundred and ten million in integrated regional water management or IRWM funding. With California divided into twelve funding regions, Rialto falls in Region Five. This region is the Santa Ana subregion. The IRWM grant program promotes integrated regional strategies for water management and funds local IRWM planning and implementation projects. The Santa Ana Watershed Project Authority, or SAPA, is the lead agency for our region and manages the One Water, One Watershed Program, also known as OWOW. In twenty fifteen, Rialto adopted the OWOW two-point-oh plan, making us eligible for the IRWM Region Five funding. From January to March twenty twenty-two, SAPA invited applications for Proposition One, Round Two funding. Rialto submitted an application for the Rialto Habitat Nature Center. In May twenty twenty-three, we were notified that the California Department of Water Resources fully funded our project, awarding us the two-point-two million for the Rialto Habitat Nature Center. Subsequently, in January of this year, DWR and SAPA entered into a grant agreement with SAPA managing the twenty-nine million in the IRWM funds for dispersment to the subgrantees, including Rialto. Therefore, staff recommendation before you tonight is to adopt resolution number eight-two-four-seven and Rua Resolution zero-eight-three-five as amended with a correction of the account number.
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Trujillo. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
Can I say one little thing?
Yes.
Cash that state check now. We have a big state deficit, so please-
Definitely.
Use those state funds.
Thank you.
Move quickly. All right, that brings us to tab six.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. For your consideration, staff is recommending the approval of the extension of the professional services agreements with E R S C N Willver-
Move approval.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Baca. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of council. Submitted for your approvals, a request for city council to approve and award a contract service agreement with Nesho of California, Inc., for the City Parks and Facilities Landscape Ground Maintenance Services and-
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott, second by Councilmember Baca. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. The item before you is requesting to award a construction contract to Willver paving in the amount of four hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents for the Sycamore Avenue Safe Rust School Improvement Project.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
A motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Baca. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, tab nine. The item before you is requesting to authorize a contract change order in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to Michael Baker International pursuant to their on-call agreement for professional civil engineering services for design of the Frisbee Middle-
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Scott, a second by Councilmember Trujillo. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we got what's going on in Rialto.
Move approval.
Yes!
Move approval.
All right, here's what's going on in Rialto. Tomorrow, we will have our men's health fair here from ten A M. to two P M. Ms. Barbara's got some fantastic things planned for you guys, so make sure you show up. Summer Glow Senior Social will be June thirteenth at the Grace Vargas Senior Center from two to four P M. Movies in the Park will be this Friday at Ferguson Park. We'll be showing Mario Brothers. Fun starts at seven P M. Teen Summer Kickoff is scheduled for Saturday, June fifteenth, at Tom Sawyer Pool from four to nine P M. Rialto Juneteenth Jam will be held at Ferguson Park on June nineteenth from four to nine P M. Movies in the Park will be held on Friday, June twenty-first, at Margaret Todd. We will be showing Sweetwater. Fun starts at five P M. Girl Softball Association District All-Star Tournament will be held June- Girl Softball Association District All-Star Tournament will be held June twenty-first through the twenty-third at Frisbee Park and Eisenhower High School. And the Fourth of July Celebration will be on Fourth of July at Jerry Eves. And that's all I got for you.
All right, that brings us to reports.
Can I elaborate on my, on my, um?
Absolutely. You are my favorite city clerk, so please.
While you're coming forward during your reports. Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Yes, uh, you are scheduled to do push-ups tomorrow against, uh, Chief Clean at the, uh, Men's Health.
Oh, looks like we'll have to go live with that one.
Yeah, you have to go live and come out.
You know, it's funny you mention that because he and I already did that event today and I beat him.
Oh, wow. Yeah, was there any witnesses other than you?
Captain Adams was there.
Well, I didn't.
Captain Adams, can you please come to the podium? I'm kidding.
So, so that's happening at ten, so, so citizens, residents, please come out and, um, take part in, um, watching, uh, Councilmember Scott and, uh, Chief Clean.
I have work, I have yard work tomorrow. I won't, I'm not available.
Do their push-ups and, and also come out to, um, take part in the activity that we have. We have some, uh, free haircuts for men, some, uh, prostate checks up, blood pressure.
Free haircut?
Uh, dental, I'm not talking about cutting your hair.
You're already doing the push-up event. No haircut for you.
Uh, we have, we have dent- dental cleaning, so please come out and take part in the activities that we have. We have partnership with, uh, a couple of nonprofits throughout the city of Rialto. So hopefully come out and, and see what we have to offer. That's from ten to two. And then also since I'm, have a, another announcement that we're working on. Also, Councilmember Scott challenged the, uh, Fire M P D for making their brist it. He claimed he makes the best brist it, so, uh, that's what you said.
When is this supposed to be happening?
This is in, this is for National Night Out. This is in, in August. I'm just saying, you claim you make the best brist.
I, I do.
And you wanted to be one of the components.
That's correct. I'm, I'm gonna represent the council.
Yeah, that's what you said, so I'm just, I'm just letting them know, so.
Well, I see a lot of challenges and, uh, there is, uh.
City council against them.
All right.
Okay, okay, it's on record.
It's on the record, yes, thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Scott, you have reports?
I only have one thing tonight. Audrey and Andrew, your dad, that's this guy up here, is taking you to Dairy Queen when you leave here to get ice cream. Whatever you want, and then you can go to Chick-fil-A. Eat the ice cream first and then to Chick-fil-A.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Trujillo?
Yeah, I was just at different graduations at the, I was with my colleagues here, uh, at the, uh, all the Rialto, uh, high, high schools, graduations at the Toyota Sports Arena. And then last night, uh, was, uh, class eighteen of the Pride Platoon. So I want to thank the police department also for their mentorship of our youth in our city. Uh, some great stories last night. Uh, the families came. They were very appreciative of the work that you guys have done to really kind of, uh, help their, their kids uh, just kind of, uh, have better self-esteem, be able to kind of build character and, and take more responsibility for themselves and their families. So thank you so much for that. And as well as, uh, I want to thank all the parents at those graduations, uh, back on that Sunday, um, at the Toyota Sports Arena. Very, very, you know, Rialto has a lot of proud parents, uh, families. Huge numbers of, of family members came to support their, their students. And I also wanted to congratulate my colleague, Mayor Protem, Andy Carasalas, for, for his, you know, family and his daughter, Elise, for her, uh, her speech that she made during the, uh, the ceremony. I think it's a, you know, it's definitely something that, that, something to be proud of, so thank you so much for that. Other than that, I have two items. I wanted to see if you could bring the legislative platform back up for discussion. I think that's something that's really, really needed as a priority for our city. And then also if we can have some type of priority list of projects for state and federal funding. I think it's just time for us to get more well-informed of what we're pitching, uh, out to our, uh, you know, for grant funding, so we can have a better understanding of, of what direction we're heading. Thank you.
Councilmember Baca?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I also attended the graduation ceremonies. I'd like to, first of all, commend Rialto Unified School District in coordinating the graduation for four high schools. On one particular day, I attended, uh, with my colleagues that also attended that, the ceremonies for Myler, um, High School, Eisenhower, Carter, in which the Mayor Protem's daughter graduated from high school. So congratulations, uh, to her on her graduation. And then also, uh, Rialto High School had their graduation. I want to thank, uh, the school district, thank the students, congratulate the students that graduated and, uh, wishing the best, uh, in their future endeavors. I think it's good for the city that, uh, we're able to participate and see the graduation of a lot of our future leaders that'll be throughout the country or right here in the city of Rialto. Also, I attended the Rialto Unified School District, uh, Rialto Children Nutrition Summer Kickoff at Frisbee Park. Uh, that was on, uh, Saturday. And then I also attended the, the Run, Watch, Brunch Cruise on Sixty-Six Car Show on Saturday morning. Uh, it was excellent turnout by a lot of the vehicles that were there and a lot of people from within our communities that came out to watch the car show. Then I also attended the Rialto Parks Little League Closing Ceremonies at Rialto Park. And this was done Saturday with a lot of our youth. And I want to congratulate the Rialto Little Leaguers that'll be participating in the All-Star Game coming up, uh, this weekend. And, uh, fifth, I also attended with one of my colleagues, the Rialto Police Department Pride Platoon Graduation Ceremonies. And I'd like to, uh, congratulate all of the kids that sacrificed their time and their energy, uh, to go through and finally graduate. And I seen a lot of them doing a lot of the push-ups. Uh, I know that we talked about push-ups here. I remember doing a lot of push-ups when I was in the military and pushing Texas an awful lot, uh, during that time. Last but not least, uh.
He's welcome. He is welcome to come out here tomorrow.
Last but not least, uh, I want to state that the, uh, U S A S A Girl Softball Tournaments will, are going to be held right here in the city of, uh, Rialto at Frisbee Park. There are forty-nine teams that will be participating. Uh, that tells of forty-nine teams that'll be coming in and participating in the girl softball, which means that we've got to look towards, uh, in the future, if we have a big tournament like this, we need additional hotels because there are not too many hotels that can host a lot of these teams that are coming from outside the area uh, with the girls that are participating and of course the parents that are coming with them. I want to congratulate the, uh, whoever will, the winner will be, but forty-nine teams, uh, will be participating in fast pits softball. I know what it's like because I played, uh, seventeen years of Major League softball and, uh, went to a lot of world tournaments and A S A World Tournaments, uh, when I was a little bit younger. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Come on out tomorrow and do some push-ups. Come on out tomorrow.
So we have a new contestant for the push-up? Captain?
At ten thirty.
Adam Sweet. There's gonna be an entire council, uh, push-up contest.
All, all five of us?
Yeah.
Oh, well, you, you, are you going against?
I'll be the ref.
Police Department and, you're going against Police Department? And then you also gonna guess, going against the Fire Department by, uh, see who can put the turn, the turnouts on fast. Can you beat the Fire Department in doing that? And then from that.
No, I compliment them on being excellent in shape and being able to do a lot more push-ups than all of us here. So congratulations, Police Department, Fire Department, on your endeavors to be healthy and fit and provide a service to our community.
Great, yes.
So you're not coming in.
Thank you. So I, I want to thank my colleagues for joining me at the, uh, at the graduation ceremony at the Honda. Uh, it was, uh, it was a great experience. Big shout-out to the Rialto Unified School District for such a great organization of all the high schools, all the Rialto Unified School District high schools. And, uh, I want to, uh, really commend, uh, uh, Class President Elise Carasalas, my daughter, who did an amazing speech, um, uh, with thousands of people, uh, there at the arena. She, she did an amazing job and I.
Good thing she takes after her mom.
Good thing she does take after her mom. I, I, I told her that after that speech, there's nothing else that would, she would be intimidated by because there was literally thousands of, of attendees at that, uh, ceremony. So I was so, uh, happy for her and, uh, we, um, we were all as a family, uh, very happy to see her graduate and, uh, to see her give her speech, uh, to the, uh, graduating class. And, uh, I also attended the Run With Your Brung. It was a great event. I'm glad to see that we're having a lot more attendance, so I'm glad that, uh, there you go. There was, uh, there was really, uh, uh, an uptake of, of plenty of more cars, uh, so, oh, there we go. There's, there's, uh, there's the doggy too, if you see her to the left. She, she made it too. So it was a, a great event. I'm glad, uh, great coordination by the, uh, Rialto Police Department and all the other agencies that, that, uh, took part in that. And, uh, that's all I have for today. And we will be recessing into closed session and come back. Move to, uh, closed session? Motion to move to closed session? I got a motion by Councilmember Trujillo And a second by Councilmember Scott, we are in closed session. Mr. Attorney, can you please report out?
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor Protem. You had two closed session items tonight. First was a conference with your labor negotiator, you did meet with the labor negotiator, give direction. There was no other reportable action on that item, and the final item was a conference with your real property negotiator. You met with your real property negotiator, who was your Director of Community Development, Kolby Katari, with regard to the property that's listed on there. You did discuss direction, and that was the only reportable action. That concludes my report, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Move adjournment, second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Scott and a, a second by Councilmember Trujillo. Motion by Councilmember.
That's all right.
Baca. And a second by Councilmember Trujillo.
Okay.
Yeah, Scott wasn't even here.
No, he was here, he just opened his, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.